All right, everybody, welcome to the Selma City Council Special Meeting. It's April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five at ten oh three A.M. in the Selma City Council Chambers at seventeen-ten Tucker Street, Selma, California, nine-three-six-six-two. Teleconference phone number is three zero one seven-one-five-eight-five-nine-two. The webinar ID is eight-nine-one-six-eight-six-four-five-zero-zero-five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, members of the audience shall not engage disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of threatening or abusive language, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, or impede or otherwise render the orderly conduct of a city council meeting infeasible. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Councilmember Trahill?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to make a statement at this time? Anybody online or on the phone with a comment?
Hi, Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Before we get started, we are going to make an agenda change, and we are going to, I propose that we take action item one-two and put it as action item one-one before the discussion item of the budget workshop. So I know we have a couple people here who are just here for that item, so we don't want to keep them waiting unnecessarily. So do we have council approval, council consensus to change item one-two to one-one?
Yeah.
Okay? And moving on, we will now consider action item formerly one-two as one-one, and that is going to be consideration and necessary action on release of authorized funding for legacy youth center improvements.
We have a report first?
Yes. Good morning, council. It's weird not to say good evening. Good morning, council. Staff went and reviewed, conducted a brief site visit of the legacy youth center, reviewed the approved plan, and actually, we have a red line plan over, if the clerk could pass that out to the council members, it's right on the table. Staff believes that the legacy youth center has completed about eighty, eighty-five percent of the improvement shown in the plan, and would be comfortable releasing funds while we work with them to complete the rest of the red line plan.
Okay.
The various items are not necessarily, you know, high-ticket items, but they are some stenciling for no parking that has not been completed, as well as some of the footnotes on the side for some saw cut to the parking lot. So with that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you. So staff's recommending the release of the funds of forty-two thousand and change?
We'd have to find the exact number. It predates, I think, some of staff being here, so we're trying to track down that exact number.
Okay. Do we have any comment from council before we open it up to the public? Public have any input at this time? Anyone online or on the phone with a comment on this agenda item?
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council. Is there a motion to approve the release of the funds?
I make a motion.
Did you want to say anything, Pastor? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve release of funds forthwith to legacy?
I make a motion to.
Okay. Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
I apologize. Was that councilmember Avalos and Osagara?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill? Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is a discussion item, it's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget workshop. Finance Director Moreno.
I'll actually provide some introductory comments and basically turn the keys over to the finance director. I just want to, first of all, commend staff, all the staff, especially finance, who was working this weekend on getting solid numbers for this workshop, as well as all the department heads getting their requests for expenditures in, so that they could be included, so that we can work through council requests as well as part of this budget workshop. I think it's customary to remind everybody that this is a, generally, a high-level discussion on request for the upcoming fiscal year, so that we can work towards presenting a draft budget proposal to the council. I think it would be prudent to discuss maybe as well moving the draft budget adoption from May sixth to maybe a special meeting, given some of the administration changes, giving staff some time to work with, staff to work with staff on preparing a balanced budget for council in a timely manner.
Thank you for that. Before you get started, Finance Director Moreno, I'm just going to go on record saying I've requested current financials many, many times now. I've requested detailed financial numbers. We didn't even get this report ahead of time. I requested that yesterday and was told that the presentation wasn't ready. We need to have it ready, because we're just looking at these numbers now. We don't really have any forewarning, and we don't have any preparation in advance for this. I also was under the impression we were going to have Mr. Jolly here, who did his twenty-three, twenty-four audited numbers. I don't know how you prepare budget forecasts or projections without the background of actual budget, real audited numbers from the previous fiscal year. And that's another thing I've been asking for and asking for, and he's just not showing up. Well, we signed his check at the last meeting, so I'm going to look at that check register for the next council meeting, and I'm going to pull that check. If we don't get an update on where he is on that fiscal year, because these are great numbers, but we're shooting in the dark at this point, and I want more than that. This is our job as a financial oversight committee for the city. I took four hours off from work today, at a busy time, and I want to be able to use my time productively, just like everybody in the city. I think we should all be able to expect that from each other.
Thank you, Mayor Robertson, Mayor Protem Gera, and members of the council. Yes, we are having Brian Jolly to the May sixth meeting. He'll be presenting the twenty-three, twenty-four audited financial statements. So those are numbers that are truly expensed, and they have audited those numbers for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
I have a question before you get started on the meat of this thing. Last meeting, we had asked, or I had actually requested the financial status of where we're at right now, is that going to be presented?
Yes, that was my next statement.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So Jerome and I are working on those reports for you. Our system is really antiquated, where it's hard to pull out a report that is asked of you all. So we're working on that. We plan to meet with you all on that with the acting city manager, so you will have those reports going forward. That being said, right now, we have this accounting software that's called Fund Balance, which brings reports are kind of hard to get. We are transferring and transitioning to a new accounting software called Tyler ERP, which will probably be, go live soon, next couple of months. So you'll see, starting July first going forward, that we're going to have a lot friendly use reports that are easy to read, and a lot easier as far as for all, you know, accounting questions and stuff.
And to both the mayor and the council members' point, I've requested time with all of you over the next week, which we will bring those financials to you as well. So we're working, as the finance director said, we're working on formatting those reports in a fashion that represents the information that's being requested. I think what was requested before was a profit and loss statement type format, which is good for businesses, but we're a municipal organization, and a profit and loss statement is not the appropriate type of document that we would prepare, the appropriate type of report. That being said, we understand the type of reports that the council is looking for to understand before the budget is brought before you, and we assure you that you will have those within the next week.
Right. And whatever you call it, it's a statement of cash flows. We have, I think a lot of us up here are familiar with numbers. I could go back to my office and run a report on QuickBooks, and it'll give me a general idea of where I am, how much money I have in the account, and how much expenses I have and we paid to date, and what our bond look, what our debts look like as well. So not asking for incredibly detailed information here, just information that we need to know so that we know what we can authorize expenditures for, because that's our job up here. If we authorize expenditures for money we don't have, that is a crime. We can't do that. So we need to have that information from you folks provide to us so that we can make the best decisions that we possibly can, and when we request the same information over and over, we want that information provided.
Maggie, no disrespect to you, really clearly understand your situation, you know, being here a little over a month or so. It's very difficult to prepare something as detailed as what we're requesting, but in the past years, it's exactly what I've requested. And what happens is, when it comes to our staff that we're trying to work very closely with and helping them in their departments regarding staffing, regarding what they need, it's hard for us to give those type of figures out when we don't have exactly what we need. So that's why we continue to ask for these things, because we want to do the best things for our departments, you know, for our employees. I mean, that's what we're here for. You know, we care about our staff, we care about the employees, and we want to make it better for them. So just want to, you know, kind of reiterate that to you. Again, it's no disrespect to you at all. You know, you're falling short because of the fact that you're just here a month, so don't take it personal.
Oh, I don't think you, Mayor Protem. I do plan to, reviewing the policies as we speak, the first quarter of twenty-five, twenty-six, I plan to bring quarterly reporting of the actual budget, what we expense to date, and a percentage with that, so it'll be transparent where we are at this stage. So we'll come back that quarterly. I'm also taking an investment report on the May sixth, revising the policy, which will incorporate us different investment tools. That being said, that also does state in our policy that we should be reporting quarterly our cash and treasurers report that's come forth with you all, again, the first quarter of the next fiscal year, so I'm working on those reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you again, as we go through the budget season and build our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So today's workshop is just a high-level preliminary numbers that we have for you all, and again, to get an understanding from city council of your wishes, to get ready to propose the, again, the proposed budget mid-May, as mentioned by acting city manager, as well adopting at the end of June. So next slide, please. So looking at today's agenda for our workshop, I'm going to go over the mission statement and values, as again, as the council priorities, overview of the general fund and the measure S, and then have each respective department head go over their department budget highlights, and again, have a discussion with you all of any requests from the council, and ending it with questions and comments. So again, so if we look at our mission statement, our purpose, again, so we are building Selma into a place of prosperity, unity, and strength, and the way we do that is how we behave by our values, by being honorable of ownership and realistically optimistic, and we hold every staff members to those standards. I just wanted to bring it over. So next slide, please. So we look over the council priorities. This is what we had last year, so we have five sections on here. The first one, my understanding for council priorities is public safety, followed by infrastructure, as well as downtown revitalization, and again, for community engagement and customer service and staffing, and lastly, the parks and facilities. At this time, I want to give the council opportunity, if you want to add any more to that list, or make any changes to that. Next slide, please. So just kind of a quick overview of the expenditures for the general fund. Our twenty-four adopted budgets is twenty-one point two. Our preliminary numbers, again, they're high level, is twenty-one point nine. A change over year is a three percent. Our estimated fund balance right now is currently as of March thirty-first at twelve-point-nine million. Of that does incorporate the, our policy of the twenty percent reserves. We have fifteen percent of the operating budget, and then additional five percent for the, any type of emergency reserves. That equates to over three million, which is sufficient for the twelve-point-nine balance.
That includes the reserves, twelve-point-nine?
Yes. If we go to the next slide is our measure expenditure. So as you know, the, this is a special revenue is restricted for a specific fund. It's our one-half cent sales tax. Right now, currently, the adopted last year was at two-point-six million. We're currently asking, not asking, but our numbers right now, preliminary at high level is three-point-four, and our estimated currently as of March thirty-first is at around three-point-five million. And I'm going to have Chief Alcaraz just kind of go over the listed on the power slide.
Yes, thank you, Maggie. Good morning, mayor, members of the council. This, going into twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, there were just a few requests that we're looking to hopefully have your approval on. The first would be our license plate reader program, which is actually, Caroline with Flock is here to kind of present that program and the service that that company provides in a lot more detail and much better than I can present. But, so she'll present, beyond that is, our second request is our taser lease. Basically, it's a taser purchase amortized over five years, and the reason for that is current, our current taser equipment is at ten years plus, it's beyond its industrial life expectancy. What's happening now is when our tasers break down, we have to reach out to Axon, and they're basically providing refurbished parts to be able to fix those tasers, because they no longer sell those tasers or manufacture new parts for that model taser. So thirty-six thousand over five years would be able to purchase all new tasers for our personnel out on the street for their safety. Those tasers would also be compatible with our body worn cameras, so there's a lot of other accessories that'll come with that, that equipment, which will make it a lot easier for our personnel when they're out in the field. And lastly, is a vehicle lease. Prior to me coming onboard, we had really not purchased patrol vehicles, and they are our staple, they're our bread and butter. That's how we get around town and do and perform the duties of law enforcement. We're looking to purchase or lease another five vehicles with an estimated lease payment for a year of ninety thousand dollars. We really like that program, just because we pay for one car a year, but we get five, right? And as we work through that program, in the future, we may be able to sell off our vehicles and get some decent equity to help purchase newer vehicles, so they're always using a great fleet, which should minimize our fleet maintenance costs, right? Because our fleet maintenance is always escalating, it's just the way that it is, right? Especially with manufacturers coming out with new vehicles all the time. Some of those parts that we have are a little bit more antiquated, and we live in a different world than we did twenty years ago. So those are really the only asks that we have going into twenty-five, twenty-six at a measure S. If anyone, I apologize. Now, if that's okay, mayor, with, and council, if Caroline could present the Flock program to you all?
Real quick, chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. I'm just going to just add this, I know we talked about it several times at the council now, but those vehicles that you want to lease, those will be local, correct? You'll be going through local dealers to purchase or lease those?
That's going to be a different program, right? I don't know that we can lease. Ms. Mayor, I'll be honest, I don't know what those programs are like. I know if I go buy a car personally, I can get a loan through a bank, and then we make those payments, right, to the bank. On patrol vehicles, I don't know that that's a...
Council at the last meeting firmly made the decision that there will be no more leasing from enterprise unless you come to council and get approval for it ahead of time, and the council, it's not approved, to my understanding, but, so we're just directing at this point. I'm just bringing it back to make sure that you go local.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, this is all just, just kind of a wish list, if you will, right? Ultimately, you approve our purchases, and, you know, we go down that road as we get further into it.
We tend to do it after the fact, that's the thing. So I just want to make sure that, just so we don't eliminate, you know, don't create extra work, when you go to get those additional vehicles, if the council approves it, it should be through a local vendor.
Correct. And I think staff, to that point, as the chief said, we're working through what we anticipate is our needs. I think implementation of council policy is what we're looking at doing based off of the prior direction given by council as it relates to the enterprise fleet contract and its utilization. But the local preference, I believe, is another item that we're bringing towards the council on May sixth to clarify local preference. The review of the enterprise fleet contract and the use of local vendors, I think the discussion has always been, if they're available, we would, and they participate in the program, we would get them from local vendors if it was cost-effective and it met our local purchasing policy. So that, again, to the chief's point, I think this is really just identifying our needs, but we understand the implementation of the policy accordingly.
Mayor Protem, I honestly don't know what that is, and the way our current budget is built, it makes it a little more difficult for us to see department by department what that, what that cost is, but we're working through improving those numbers. It's a little more transparent. I mean, we can see, but I just, to dive into it, it'd be difficult for me to tell you.
We can provide additional detail to that.
So with that, it's Caroline with Flock. I apologize.
Good morning, mayor and council. My name is Caroline Frer. I'm a territory sales manager with Flock Safety. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm looking forward to presenting Flock. I'd also like to introduce my colleague, who is here joining us virtually.
Good morning, mayor and council. My name is Kristen MacLeod. I work closely with Caroline. I am a public affairs manager, and after Caroline presents, of course, we are here to answer any questions. And after Caroline presents, of course, we are here to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you again for your time this morning.
Thank you.
So today I'll be covering why cities like yours partner with Flock. Um, I'll cover how we prevent and solve crime, including some real world examples of cities nearby. I'll go over pricing and then, of course, questions. So before we get into what we do and how we do it, I, I think it's really important to open with the why. Why we're in this business in the first place. And we're really unique in that Flock's mission is to eliminate crime, really as opposed to anything else. So every decision that we make as a company is geared to better enable your department or your city to help eliminate crime. And law enforcement agencies across the country really are caught between a rock and a hard place. 85% of agencies are facing officers, officer shortages because of recruiting challenges, overwhelming demands, including homeless activity and mental health crises, and an increase in retirements. Because of this, many agencies are operating at minimum staffing levels, causing increased response time and de-personalization of nonviolent calls. At the same time, citizens are feeling less safe with 40% of Americans reporting that they're afraid to walk home at night, the highest in three decades. So in the past, the answer to these rising fears in the community was simply to hire more police officers. But given today's recruiting challenges, that's a non-starter for most agencies. That's why we're seeing a huge increase in the adoption of technology across law enforcement agencies. Simply put, agencies are looking for new ways to do more with less. And the answer to this problem comes in the form of new technology. We call it collaborative policing. And really what it is, is a force multiplier that enables agencies of all sizes to solve significantly more crime and improve the quality of life without increasing staffing. It's technology that makes each and every officer more productive, more productive than they are today. So let me unpack what this really means. We share the same mission as the cities we partners with, really to make communities safer. And what I like to highlight here is that 10% of all reported crime in the U.S. is solved with the help of Flock. So the typical agency that has about one device per sworn officers sees a 9% increase in clearance rates. And really what they or the studies can attribute that to is access to evidence, agency behavior and using the tech tools available to them, collaboration with other agencies, as well as overcoming challenging environments. And we're partnered with 5,000 communities across the, across the nation, so you'd certainly be in good company. Another really unique thing about Flock is community engagement and being something that the community supports, which is one of our main deliverables. And really this means a few things. So we're unique in that we actually have three other teams. Um, I'm on the law enforcement team, so I work with public entities. But we also have teams that work with businesses or commercial entities. So, um, if anybody's been to Home Depot lately, as you enter into the parking lot, you'll actually see Flock LPR cameras. Those are funded by Home Depot and are available to share with local law enforcement. We also partner with HOAs as well. So really the benefit to working with other private entities like that is any business or neighborhood or school that has Flock. Uh, the police department may also be able to get access to those cameras as well. So the public-private partnership aspect with Flock is especially important for our law enforcement partners. We also understand that community members are often concerned around privacy or Big Brother. So, and there really is a fine balance between having a technology that's super impactful and efficient for law enforcement, while also being good on the privacy side. So as part of our process, we provide a lot of public support and clarification around those concerns. So with your help, we can engage your community and educate them on what Flock LPR is, or maybe more importantly, what it isn't, and really how we've built the technology in a way that's mindful of their concerns. Um, we can also host town hall meetings or community engagement events, really so the community sees this as a good thing and has any potential questions or concerns addressed. Um, additionally, we have a PR team that will also help with the agencies or cities media efforts. So the bottom line here is we have your back through this whole process. And really we are far more than just a hardware provider. This is very much a partnership. The police department will never be stuck calling an 800 number or wondering who to reach out to with questions. Um, we're really proud to say that 98% of our support tickets get resolved in less than an hour. So again, this is very much a partnership. This is by no means we set the cameras up and say, good luck, see you later. So ultimately, the police department's job is to protect and serve. And Flock's job is to make sure that our technology supports you or supports the police department with that. And no other business makes it easier for the police department to begin transforming the agency than Flock, um, including a very low upfront investment, fair pricing, completely infrastructure-free devices, um, permitting, permitting assistance where we'll, um, manage and apply for any necessary permits on the city's behalf, um, as well as a lifetime hardware and software enhancement and warranty. Um, we'll even work with, um, city council or other, uh, community groups to help get this investment funded and approved. So now to get into some more product-specific information. So looking at this slide, you can see that, um, there are quite a few products within the Flock suite, um, including license plate reading cameras, uh, live video cameras, gunshot detection, and even drones as a first responder. But for the purpose for today's meeting, I'm really going to center the presentation around license plate reading cameras. And I'll also touch very lightly on video, as I know the city has a pretty robust video system as it is. So these are our reading cameras, often called Falcons. So anything with Flock is bird-named or bird-themed. So our license plate readers again are often referred to as Falcons. Our cameras are unique in that they are completely infrastructure-free. And what I mean by that is they're powered by solar and LTE. So really you can put them in places that make the most sense without being limited to existing infrastructure, like internet connection, um, AC power, et cetera. If, with the police department, we identify, you know, a certain intersection or location is a really good fit or, um, ideal spot. If there is existing infrastructure that city maintained, we'll try to go on that. Um, but if not, we have flock poles as well. The cameras also work 24/7. Um, so the cameras are motion activated. So what triggers the image to be taken is just the passing of a vehicle by it. And the reason why that's so important is because we won't have any issues capturing missing plates, partial plates, the plates with the covers over it, et cetera. And really the 24/7 motion activation, um, ensures that we're getting all of the plate reads or all of the images. Um, there's also a machine learning component that looks at the image the same way a human would. Um, so even if you don't have a known suspect license plate, if somebody were to call 911 and simply just provide the, a description of the vehicle, the police department will also be able to search based on that vehicle description, including the make, model, uh, color, or even any unique identifiers like bumper stickers, roof racks, bike racks, et cetera. The police department will also receive real-time alerts for vehicles in NCIC, NCMEC, including amber alerts or silver alerts, um, as well as any custom alerts that Selma PD creates, or even any other nearby jurisdictions create too. Um, I'll get more into the alerts on the next slide. Um, but really we have built this with privacy in mind. Um, as you can see, we are only taking a picture of the rear of the vehicle. There is no facial recognition. There is no capability of seeing how fast a vehicle was traveling. So this can't be used for writing tickets or, um, traffic enforcement. Um, really this is just capturing an image of a vehicle passing by a specific location at a specific date and time. Um, so more on the real-time alerts, since this is really important and very valuable. So the police department really will never miss a lead with real-time alerts that come in 24/7. So oftentimes vehicle leads get missed due to a lack of awareness and understaffed agencies really can't have officers patrolling every road around the clock, looking for a known suspect vehicle. So officers will receive real-time alerts, um, when a known wanted vehicle passes by a flock camera. They can get the alerts via SMS, email, um, in the computer, in their patrol cars, or even at their desk. Anywhere you can get on the internet, they'll be able to receive a flock alert. Um, as I said earlier, you'll receive, the police department will receive alerts in NCIC, silver alerts, et cetera. Um, but for example, if really PD or Dinuba PD, which are also flock customers, if they were to create a custom hotlist alert, they could share that with Selma PD. So if a known vehicle out of either of those cities were to come into Selma, the police department would be notified as soon as that vehicle passes by a camera. Here's more information on the criteria the agency can use to create an alert or search for a vehicle. And as we sit down with the police department to evaluate the ideal locations for cameras, we'll figure out exactly which camera type makes the most sense. Um, I would assume that our standard LPR camera will probably fit the requirements of the locations in Selma. But the standard LPR camera captures two lanes of traffic going in the same direction. Again, we're taking an image of the rear of the vehicle with speeds up to about 75 miles per hour. We also have a camera that captures three lanes of traffic, speeds greater than 75 miles per hour. We even have location flexible devices that are battery-powered. Um, so really just depending on the ideal locations and whatnot, we have a camera model that'll make the most sense. Here are some pictures of what they look like. Um, the image on the left, that's on a flock pole. Um, and then the image on the right, that's an existing pole. So you can see it's a very clean installation. The cameras are set about 14 to 16 feet up. Um, so, you know, without, out of the reach of somebody just walking by. But all in all, a very clean setup or installation, which again, Flock manages on your behalf.
Excuse me, um, you do the installation too?
Correct. So I know I've mentioned this a few times already, but Flock really is the only company that views privacy as one of our deliverables, and we have found that right balance. And we do that by focusing on objective evidence, um, on vehicles, not people. There's also full audit capabilities within the platform. So anytime somebody conducts a search, they have to put in a search reason that's tied to a case. Um, so the chief or whoever is the admin, they'll be able to run a report to ensure that nobody is searching for the system for a reason that's not tied to an active investigation. And with our subscription model, Flock maintains ownership of the cameras, but the agency owns 100% of the data. And this is really important. Um, what that means is Flock will never share or sell the data. It's also completely up to the police department to decide who they'd like to share data with. Uh, most agencies in California do share with neighboring police jurisdictions. So, um, assuming Selma PD be open to that as well, but ultimately it's up to the decision of Selma PD. Um, and we also make it really easy for agencies to be completely transparent about how they use this system. Um, I'll share more on the next slide with that. But again, the overall summary of this is that this is definitely something your community can get behind. So we'll also provide you with a completely free transparency portal. This is something that you can list on your city's website, Facebook page, you name it. Um, so if community members ever have questions like, what are these cameras? How are they being used for what data is being collected? You can direct them here. Um, this is also completely customizable. And we really do recommend that cities utilize this as we understand how important it is to be transparent and forthcoming with technology you're implementing in the city. So I want to touch very briefly on our video solution. Um, I understand that the city has a pretty robust video system as it is. I understand the project now really is focused on LPRs, but I thought it was important to show that Flock also can work with what you already have in place. So of course, coupling live video cameras with license plate readers can be an even more effective tool for law enforcement. And we make it really simple to access any live video cameras you have, whether they're flock cameras or really any company you can think of. Um, so you could, in a really easy to view map, you could see the location of the live video cameras as well as the location of the LPR cameras, just for further contextual evidence. Um, so schools, businesses, neighborhoods, traffic cameras, these are all really great examples of third-party video streams that cities, you know, may want to integrate down the line. Flock also has our own live video cameras too. Um, the service model with any, with any of our devices is that Flock maintains the installation permitting, um, et cetera. It also includes that hardware and software, uh, warranty. So next I want to share some relevant, um, success stories or examples from cities nearby. So we are really proud to say that Flock has the largest network of license plate readers in the country, as well as California. We're partnered with over 400 agencies across the state alone. Um, this is just a very short list of agencies in the Central Valley. Um, again, you'll also be able to work with all these other agencies too. And this is really important because crime isn't just insular to Selma and would-be suspects often don't respect jurisdictions. Um, so we don't believe that the evidence should be either. So you'll also be able to access this very large network of license plate readers across the state. And on this image, sorry, on the image, the green dots are law enforcement license plate reading cameras, and then the blue and the purple are either HOA or community. So you can see that we have a lot, nearly 30,000. Here are some results from Vacaville. Um, the results really speak for themselves. Um, less than a year after implementing Flock, they saw a 33% decrease in reported vehicle thefts, a 35% increase in arrests related to vehicle thefts. And as a result, and a pretty immediate return on their investment, they are able to request two times the number of cameras. And here are some additional results from Delano, uh, just a little further south than you. Um, so they saw similar results as in Vacaville. Um, in 2023, um, a little over six months, less than a year after implementing Flock, they saw a 22%, 22.6% reduction in overall crime. And then the following year, that more than doubled to 56%. Um, they saw a 50% decrease in stolen vehicles. Um, but the quote above, I think it shows that Flock is for more than just looking for stolen vehicles. Um, this is a great example of how Delano PD was able to use Flock to help capture a kidnapping suspect with the victim still in the car. Um, and Delano PD also, similar to Vacaville, requested two times the number of cameras, just since they saw such fantastic results. Um, here's another recent story out of Visalia. Um, just this past February, there was a shooting downtown, um, near the bars, when the bars were letting out. Um, sadly, a 54-year-old man was found with a gunshot wound, who was later pronounced dead. And Visalia PD were able to use the description that eyewitnesses gave of the vehicle, where they found an image matching that description within Flock. Uh, they were able to find the suspect who lived in Orange Cove, and the next day they were able to apprehend him. And ultimately, that suspect is facing murder charges and possession of a firearm. Um, here are some examples of organized retail theft out of Concord, uh, brutal assaults with LPR up in the Bay Area, et cetera. So, um, really every situation you can think of, we probably have some sort of relevant case study of how that was solved. Um, really any use case you can think of, Flock is able to assist in that. Um, so now I want to get into pricing, which I understand is probably top of everybody's mind. So our pricing is very simple and straightforward. A standard Falcon, which captures two lanes, is 3,000 per camera per year. A three-lane Falcon is 5,000 per camera per year. And that annual subscription is going to include the hardware, the solar panel, et cetera, as well as the hosting and analytics, um, cloud storage, unlimited user licenses, et cetera. Um, there is a one-time installation fee depending on where the cameras are going. So if we can go on existing So if we can go on existing infrastructure, it's $150 per camera, just a one-time fee. If we need a standard flock pole, that's $650. But if we need an advanced pole, if a camera is going on Caltrans, they require a particular pole, that's $1,900. So when the police department and I, when we sit down and evaluate the locations, we'll be able to price it accordingly based on that install fee. So with that, that concludes my presentations and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Does counsel have any questions at this time?
Yeah, Scott, I, I actually went to Reedley and educated myself on this particular camera. Look, you know, and I actually talked to this lady over the phone, by the way. And, and the tool they use and the law enforcement's across the state, across the nation. This is a tool, there's two areas they can use it. And the law enforcement division and also in the private division, the private area structure, they offer that. So it's a, it's a great tool in crime prevention, you know? And I know, you know, being on a ride along and I know the officer in the street can't be everywhere. And there's another tool in life when there's a serious crime on the street. These cameras are a great tool. A good example, by say, was a good example of one of those situations. But it's something to look at as counsel, as a group. I have some wild ideas behind closed doors. I mean, you know, you know, actually with law enforcement as well. And Jerome over here, how to, how to make these operations more affordable and accessible to the public for their safety. You know, and I thank this lady coming. I thank you. First, I met you over the phone, but I see you live now. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You know, but it's a, it's a, it's a tool that we have to look at for the future.
Thank you. City manager, can I ask a quick question? How many cameras do you think we'll need, chief? I should say LPRs.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you all for being so supportive. I know in the past years, you guys all asked what, what tools do we need? We absolutely appreciate that. And my response in the past was, you know, we're still researching, analyzing our current program and then finding the most efficient way to build that forward into the future. And after speaking with many vendors and, and looking at our current program, we felt that Flock was the way to go, which is why we're here today. So if you ask me, I mean, if we get 100 cameras, that'd be great. But the reality is, you know, fiscal constraints are, are what they are. We were recommending 20 to start with, to get a good base. And I feel that now we have a culture within our police department that's going to utilize these technologies to be efficient and effective. And I think that's one of the biggest hurdles, right? Was getting our, our current labor force bought into the, the benefits of using these technologies as they're out.
How long did it take for people, body cams to become part of the culture? Did that take a little, were there a little upfront on that?
You know, I think that we're very fortunate that we started that a little bit later because by then, you know, you talk to, they talked to their brothers in law enforcement in the region and they're hearing the advantages of having those, those body cameras. So I think that was a lot more acceptable because the technology had been out for a while. The sheriff's office was going to them. And I think that kind of, the, the, the technology had been proven, right? It'd been tested and proven.
Everyone was using it.
And I, so when we rolled ours out, it was very, a very smooth transition in acceptance rate. And I think that, you know, our current CCTV surveillance program is working. They're seeing the benefits of that. This adds a humongous asset and, and tool for them to use as they're out patrolling.
What kind of learning curve would, and training curve would be associated with the LPRs?
I, I don't think there'll be any at all, just the, the, these young individuals, our new generation, they're so tech savvy. You know, there's another tool we want to get to them, but you know, that, that'll be a discussion next fiscal year.
Quick question, how would it be utilized? Say someone barrels through town, high speed chicks, you got to read that plate. How do you access?
They're going to be able to access from their, from their mobile devices in their, in their cars.
And they won't have to go through dispatch?
No, no, we'll have dispatch also, but, and, and here, so last year, counsel, thank you, you approved the purchase of our MDTs, which upgraded our hardware to be able to run better, right? And, and gather more data much more quickly and efficiently. So now that we have that hardware in place, we can add this other tool to that hardware. Had we added this to last year's hardware and those old MDTs are like 10 years old? It's like, it's like dial up, dee, 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 right? It's just going to take a while. This, this way, now we have equipment that can accept these technologies and be much more efficient.
Any way you could add to reports, a success story on how many enhancements are a result of the LPR? So we can see a, a real track record of how it, how it helps the PD?
Absolutely, we're absolutely going to do that, Mr. Mayor. I mean, the community needs to know how we're utilizing these funds to maximize efficiencies within the organization, within the department and the community. So absolutely.
I have a question, I have a question for the chief. So how will you select the areas that you're going to place them in? Because I mean, some areas are more needed than others.
So we're going to meet with our investigations unit, look at what they see. Because our patrol officer responds to a crime and, and does a good investigation, right? Our investigation, our investigations division puts all these crimes together and looks at a bigger picture, right? Because they're not responding, they're sitting back looking at the entire city. And then our command staff as well. Everybody's continually assessing data to see where we can project future crimes or where we're having problematic areas within, within the community. So kind of, because, you know, it sounds like a lot, 20 cameras sounds like a lot. That's really five intersections, maybe four or five intersections. So really trying to maximize those monies to, to get the best coverage that we can, where we can anticipate some of our more, more, more violent crimes, if you will. Not that we have a ton, but, but still, it goes to making the community safer. So it, it just, again, there'd be a lot of perspectives, council members altogether, that we use to identify those locations.
Yeah, because I'm thinking it's not just for identifying for stolen vehicles, but also when there's drive bys and all that, it's a wonderful tool to see who, you know? Because I know in my area, I know it's the barrio. Nobody likes to say the barrio, but it is what it is. But I think eventually we're going to clean it up by adding something like this.
Counselor, I, I agree, I think that the Vadio, I started back here in 1997, 1998. And I can tell you that I just, the Vadio is much safer than it was 25 years ago. And, but, but like anything, we're always looking to improve and, and provide the best service that we can and be better.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
And to that point, I think the key, the, the key word the chief brought up was data driven, right? And it's hyphenated words, it's not two words, it's one word. Data driven is hyphenated, it's one word. We will use data to help drive those decisions. We understand where the need is and getting the best investment for the citizens for the use of those cameras is really important.
I have a, I have a two questions. One is, that's the young lady, the, what's the lifetime span on these cameras? What's the use, what's the past history on the lifespan?
Multiple years, but again, you're paying a yearly fee. So if a camera were to age out or start acting up, we would just come out and replace it.
So it comes with a warranty?
Correct.
How long is the warranty?
As long as you're a flock customer. So if you're a flock customer for two years, five years, 10 years.
So, so when you're paying for the service and the, the monitor, you're also carrying a price for the warranty? Or is that like insurance? Is that what you're paying?
There is no additional price for the warranty. It's just the 3,000 per camera per year.
With life, lifetime?
Lifetime, mhm. So if you were to have 20 cameras, it would be $60,000 annually. And that would include the warranty and any, and any ongoing updates as well.
Okay.
And not the installation?
Correct, and not installation, that is paid one time, year one.
Is it, is it come with a software that's driven, software?
Correct, yeah. So the cameras themselves, like the, the, the brains of the camera, that's all software. So a lot of updates, those can just be pushed out remotely without the need for a tech to come out and replace the camera. But if it's a hardware issue, we'll come out and service it. And if we need to replace it, we'll replace it for no additional fee.
No, is there any enhancement charges for the software?
No, not for any standard enhancements, mhm. Yes, we do have additional software packages that I didn't get into today. Those are more robust. And of course, the first step is getting devices set up. But a good example of an enhancement that we made recently is with our nighttime images. So we were hearing from customers that our night images were good, but they weren't great. So we created night vision, which just really enhanced it. And we came out with that and it was as simple as, you know, turning the switch on and all the devices had the new enhanced night vision.
Just to understand you correctly, so when you purchase that $3,000 unit, then, then you'll be able to market what's, what enhancements or what software we'll be able to purchase? Is that, or does that already include it?
So with what I presented today in terms of being able to search based on the vehicle description, access to the network, including, sharing with other agencies, that's all going to be included. We do have additional software packages that are really robust that agencies with full-fledged real-time crime centers might want to purchase. That's always something that you can add on later. But any out of the box features that are part of our standard LPR offering will just be pushed, be pushed to the devices without any additional charges.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question. Real quick, to the chief, the only last question I have is, hey, when you guys were doing your, I understand that there's other cities, multiple cities have been doing this. The logistics on the cameras, you, you're saying we're purchasing 20 cameras. Have you actually looked at how many, or have you, the department looked at how many intersections for the future that maybe you could come back to the council? So we can kind of do, I mean, I mean, the way I look at it is budgeting, right? Where was budgeting? So if we could come down to a point of saying, hey, you know what? We have 60 intersections that we'd like to combat in five years. But then we can say that in five years, well, we have a budget of X amount. We're thinking 60,000 right now. Maybe in five years, we're looking at X amount of dollars. We can factor it into some grants or something also.
Absolutely. We, we actually, I think, believe have 40 to 45 intersections identified. But then we have a priority on those 45, right? Which are going to be, what, what are the most crucial for us right now? Based on the trends that we're seeing currently. Additionally, the, the beautiful thing about Flock is they're working with Home Depot already, Lowe's. They're in talks, I believe, just in talks with Walmart. You know, so when those companies come online, that additionally gets us more data that we're not having to pay for. And then we can also work with, you know, newer developments and, and give them recommendations or at least, you know, how this program is working great for us. And, and, you know, when those private and, and developments choose their security measures, which they will, because any good business is going to invest in, in their security. And, and us having access to that data helps us increase crime solvability, which goes to crime reduction. Those are things that we can work with everybody to maximize those dollars for them and data for us, so.
And just to add to that, it's not just big box stores that get Flock. It's often a lot of family-run mom and pop shops too. I know Selma has a lot of car dealerships. I've worked with another city where they also have a lot of car dealerships. And car dealerships saw the cameras go up and thought, oh, this makes a lot of sense for us too. So really anybody can partner with Flock to help the police department, not just limited to the big names like Lowe's or Home Depot.
Okay. The night enhancement, is that part of the original packet or is that? It is, okay, great. Then you mentioned about it does, it does not include ticketing, you know, like vehicles running a red light. And that's a big problem here in Selma. Why, why wouldn't that be?
So that's just not the foundational use of our cameras. We don't have the red light technology as part of the cameras. Also, the way that the cameras are stationed, I guess, is it's pointing towards the rear of the vehicle. But that's just not part of our offering. We do work with red light camera systems where you could actually layer on our LPR technology onto their cameras. So we have a number of red light camera companies that we have existing relationships with that we could recommend. But that's just not something that Flock has as part of our service.
Okay.
I have a question for you. You mentioned car dealerships. Are you talking to any of the car dealerships here in town?
I'm not personally, since I just work with public agencies and not yet. Typically, the conversations are a little more fruitful when the police department and the city is on board. But, you know, that's something that we can absolutely have our commercial team get started on if that's something you'd like to do.
I, I believe that, if I may, counsel members together, if, if we're able, and, and counsel approves this program, we would then absolutely have to reach out to our businesses, both big and small, and talk about this service that might enhance their security measures and, and tell them the, the advantages of us accessing that data more quickly, right? So I, I think that is a definite future conversation. But I, I want to kind of, don't put the cart before the horse or whatever they, whatever that term is or analogy. But we kind of wanted to get this in, in place, kind of like our, our hardware, right? We needed to improve our MDTs hardware to be able to accept these technologies. And, and it's kind of, kind of that, the same ideology, sir.
Chief, just quickly, what would we do with our current cameras?
Mayor, pretend, Gera, th- those are things that we are looking at and how we move forward. Because our current CCT program still works well. It, it's just, you know, how, how we move those technologies forward, I think is going to be our, that's our, our biggest, not want to say obstacle, but we're mindful of that, right? We've made a huge investment in that. And to just let it go completely is, is difficult. So kind of mending or meshing those two technologies together as you move forward is, is going to be the, the, the conversation that we're continually having and assessing on, on a quarterly basis, if not annual. So I, I think that right now would be difficult to say, really kind of want to get this technology implemented and then see how those can work together possibly, because technology is always changing. And, and we, you know, in six months, heck, all these cameras could just be interfaced. So we, we just don't know, right? And I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying, we just don't know. So, you know, the vendors buy these other companies and things change all the time. So I just don't want to completely discard of a program that's, that's working and then just go, oh my gosh, maybe I, I know I sold a house a long time ago. I wish I'd never sold it. Had I known then what I knew now, right? But, but that's the reality, council member.
Do we have any comments from the folks who are here today? Do we have anybody online or on the phone that'd like to make a comment about this presentation?
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Looks like we have someone in the public that'd like to say something.
1057 Mill Street, Rose Robertson. My question is, how long have these programs been going on for? Since what year?
Founded in 27, but license plate reading cameras for much longer than that. But as a company, Flock was founded in 2017.
My other question would be if, for example, would it come in play if somebody ran a red light and, and they end up killing somebody else? God forbid that happens. Would that one then come in play for, to catch the people that went through there? Whether they're having DUI, where they, you know, they were under the influence or anything to that aspect? Would that come in play?
But we wouldn't be able to show with the license plate reading, a license plate reading camera at that intersection. We would have the photo and the data that that vehicle was at that location at that date and time.
Right now, we're on public safety, but we're just on this, on this for now, right? Are we able to come back on?
This is just a presentation and we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? We have one more comment. Just information items, we're not voting on this today.
Stella in Maricopa, California. I don't know if these questions were asked or not, because I stepped out for a minute. But is there a, how, what's the distance on this? Like how far can you see, like when they, like say someone runs a red light? What's the distance of the camera capturing that, a photo of the license plate?
So we position the cameras really no more than 45 feet from the center median. And then the camera will be angled to capture the rear of that vehicle. So about 45 feet.
Okay. And also, is there a fee, like say you want to break the contract, is there a fee for cancellation?
That I would have to revisit. I'm not sure off the top of my head, the, the language, contract.
I think the I think the agreement just has to be part of what the council votes on. And that'll be a public record. So that'll come to council and you'll have the termination clause in there. You'll have the liability. You'll have, I'm thinking of the same thing. Who, if it blows down, who's responsible? You know, physical loss, perils, things like that. Those are things that should be addressed in the actual agreement itself. But I don't think we're there yet, right? We're not to that actual agreement stage. You're going to get back with the police chief now and you guys are going to put your heads together over, and the city manager, over where those cameras are going to go and how many. And you're going to bring it as an agenda item.
Thank you.
Right, bring the matter back to council. Do we have any more questions before we move on? Councilman?
Oh, no, I thank you for showing up. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
It's going to be another time presentation, but in a budget, but that's okay. I thank you, chief. I'm glad you met with her. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Then we'll move on with our budget overview. Moving on.
Thank you, mayor. So up to slide number seven. Okay, so our next section of the workshop is our department budget highlights. At this point, we'll have each respective department head go over their departments. The first next one we're going to start with is administrative services. On this one, it covers six divisions. The city council, the city attorney, city manager, human resource, finance, and city clerk. On this one, our adopted budget is at 2.8, 2425. And the 2526 preliminary is at 3.1. It does indicate a 13% increase. We are anticipating adding two HR positions in the HR division. Slide please.
Which positions would those be?
Okay.
Morning, mayor, councilmembers. So the two positions that have been or will be requested in the budget, excuse me, is both of them in the HR department. One of them would be specifically for risk management. And the other one would be a secondary person at the front desk with both of the positions at the front desk to assist with payroll and city clerk.
Thank you.
This one, next one is just quickly going over the police department. I know we had already some presentation on police. On this division, it does incorporate six divisions. Of course, it's support, field operations, and administration. Now, we incorporated the animal services, the code enforcement, and dispatch. The adopted budget last year was at 7.6 million. And the preliminary is at 8.2, reflecting a 7% increase.
For the new councilmembers, Finance Director Moreno, describe the difference between an adopted budget and proposed budget.
So the 2425 adopted budget was already adopted by city council last June. So now that we're going currently, right now, we compare. So when I go back and do your financial monthly report, or quarterly reporting, that'll give you a perspective where we are for the adopted budget and where we are currently. The purpose of this today is just to show the difference of what we adopted last year to what we're having preliminary 2526 proposed budget.
I have a question before we continue. On the positions that you're proposing, one is for benefits. And you said benefits and what was it, human resources? What was it?
So the position itself is in human resources, but the specific tasks would be within risk management and the benefits. For example, it would be receiving claims when we have from the city, processing those, workers' comp claims, all of the health benefits. When we have new employees, we enroll them in the new, enroll them within the benefits themselves. When we have, we also have health benefits committee meetings. They would be the chair of that. We are looking to establish a wellness program. They would be the person who would be the chair of that as well. So there's a wide variety of items within risk management for the health and risk management and wealth benefits for this person to, the task to.
Who handles that right now?
I do.
And you have an assistant also, right?
I have one person, an HR technician, that she, her primarily, her primary is recruitment. And everything else falls to me.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, trying to see, you know, if we really need all these people.
I can tell you that I've been here for two years. And I'm considered what you call a working director. So I, my HR tech has been one to where, especially now in this role as a city clerk as well, because I am full-time deputy city clerk, but also full-time administrative services director, again, taking on other roles as well. When I first started two years ago, I had identified that the HR department was lacking in personnel. And I took over pretty much everything. We have restructured the HR department. And I would actually like to not be working 10 to 12 hours a day. And that was before I took on the city clerk role. So it's really just to be able to structure the HR department to where it is a Monday through Friday, eight to five, have everything done, that type of thing.
So is there any way that we could, as the financial people, the oversight committee, can we take existing positions and reallocate them with that paid to, say, the HR department? So that you have someone in there as an assistant? I'm specifically looking, I don't know if we've gotten there yet, but the administrative assistant to the city manager, that has been a position that hasn't been filled in a while. It hasn't been a particularly successful position. And I'm wondering if we have consensus to take that position and move that payroll over to the HR department? So that, is the HR director saying she's not working 10 to 12 hours a day and has assistance in that extraordinary circumstance? The city clerk's no longer here. So I get that there's a little bit of that that will not continue, but.
Well, I can say, mayor, prior to accepting the role or taking on the role as deputy city clerk, I was already working that amount of hours.
Gotcha.
And so as this role has provided more, I'm working more.
Not disputing it. So I'm just trying to find a way to do it, you know, physically responsibly to get you help there. Could we move, and I see you writing this down, do we have council consensus to look at moving that position over to the HR department?
I would ask also to maybe get the amount, what the actual amount, budgeted amount for that position was and see what it reflects. Because, I mean, we take into, I'm listening to our HR person and I'm hearing words like wellness programs, well, that's going to pay us a dividend at the backend. And so taking that into account, that if they're entertaining a discussion to add bodies to the HR department, because they're going to bring X, Y, and Z, which is in a wellness program, well, that's going to pay a dividend back at the backend. So I would entertain that to add that amount of budget it is, but also maybe include a little extra to make sure we facilitate the thoughts of what you're wanting to implement, because at the backend, it not only helps our employees, it betters their health, it increases, it lowers the amount of the cost, right? So why not look at it that way? I would entertain to look at.
I agree with, I agree with the council member. I just, our talk's going a little bit different than I thought it would. I thought we were going to have an organization chart with salaries per organization. It would have been easier just to point at admin assistant and say, can you move it over there? Again, make it easy for us, please.
Next time we can.
Next time we have that on May 6th, maybe, maybe we're jumping ahead a little bit, cart before the horse. Maybe we ought to have a May 6th meeting.
We are actually.
Well, maybe we ought to have a May 6th meeting where we're getting a little more detailed in terms of an organization chart with actual numbers. So you kind of make it a little easier for us. And then we don't really know what our revenue is either. So we don't really know what we're dealing with, if we're even going to have the money for that. But we're rolling with it, right? We're here, so we're trying to do the best we can. But I think on May 6th, we can dial it in a little bit more, in more detail. And that would be one of the ways we could do it. I'm going to continue to make comments like this. I think the other councilmembers will too, and members of the public, in terms of potentially move, you know, moving money around, moving positions around so that we can, you know, 13% is a big ask. So I mean, I think we have to be physically responsible here and make sure that we have the money, number one. And two, that, you know, we're allocating it as wisely as possible.
So really, what we're saying is that that 13% could potentially reflect 5% because we'll take it from somewhere else and move it here.
Now, a net game, net number.
If I may, mayor, I think it's noted, I think staff actually had a discussion, that exact discussion yesterday about the executive assistant to the city manager position. And so we're well aware of trying to bring costs down in those positions. Again, this is a high-level discussion on initial needs. We'll take advice at council and try and move positions around and reallocate them as needed.
Take our input, boil it down and have a detailed look.
And absolutely. And we'll bring that detail at the May 6th meeting with the items discussed. Again, I want to reiterate, in the interim, we will be meeting with the councilmembers between now and May 6th to go over a variety of items. And these type of questions and clarifications will be amongst those.
Which is awesome, but, you know, we got Brown Act. You're going to be meeting with individually, so you will not be having a meeting. You got us all together now where we can make decisions.
Absolutely.
The time to do it.
But can I, just really quick, can we make sure that we implement the discussions in regards to the position and remove, get the amount of what it is for that assistant versus what the extra cost?
I believe the executive assistant in the position, the executive assistant would be the larger salary of the positions being asked. And so it would be a net decrease if that position, yeah. Net change.
Well, that's good news.
And may I also interject is that one of the, of the two positions that's been requested, the one that is specifically within risk management benefits, is that we would be able to have some of that salary come from the wellness program. I'm sorry, the wellness fund that we recently, you know, we're now self-funded. So some of the, my goodness, I can't talk this morning. I'm not used to this. So some of the salary would be able to come from that fund because it would be specific to the benefits itself. So it would not be general fund money.
Yeah. Need to see the allocation rate.
The HR Vanegas, those two positions have already been budgeted. So doesn't this already include for those positions?
So I have one HR technician. And we also have one, I'm sorry, one office assistant in HR. I'm requesting an additional HR technician and an additional office assistant. So to double the personnel.
Okay.
Oh, since this includes finance, how about someone to make sure that the checks get out? It sounds like there's a pinch point there where you don't have staffing. I'm talking to the finance director. Finance, you know, get that last check or first check or whatever, get checks out. Is there a need for an additional person in finance to do that? Or would you be looking at reallocating? Or is there even a problem?
So we can try to look at the procedures to kind of streamline it, to make it more efficient. So we're working on that currently.
And that would involve no additional expenditure by the city? Okay.
So let's go to the next slide. So going forward here, I'll have Chief Webster go over the next four slides and the remaining by Jerome covering the other departments.
I'm sorry, before you get, which I hate to do this, put it in our, did we do police already?
Yes, we just went over the numbers.
So sorry, I forgot to bring something up. Can we put it in reverse for just a sec? Okay, animal services. We got issues as we've been talking. We're not throwing rocks, we're not doing any of that. This is budget time. How many positions are budgeted for the animal shelter for this year? How many positions are budgeted for the, for the animal shelter for this year?
In addition to my position, we have a shelter manager, a field manager, and three animal care technicians.
Because what we're looking at, right, Chief?
Uh, ju, just to note, Mr. Mayor, is it word, those field technicians or animal care technicians are, we're currently in the process of hiring them, so.
So three are unhired right now? So you currently have three?
We have three vacancies, sir.
Three open positions to fill. So just from the streets, from being a citizen here, the issues that we're seeing right now is nobody's out. We don't see the animal shelter out in town. We talked with the city manager about this, with the police chief while he was on vacation, thank you for getting back to us, by the way, on vacation. Yeah, we, we had an issue on the west side and we had dogs running and there was no one from animal services and, you know, PD had to go out there. My issue with PD going out there is they're great people, but they are not animal control officers. And I don't want, we, that is always, let me put this diplomatically, that is, oh, that has potential to be a bad situation for police officers going out on calls when an animal is, or animals are loose because they're not trained in picking up the animals. And that is no knock on the PD. What can we do to increase the presence of the, the animal shelter outside? We called over there at four fifteen, no one answered at the shelter. I called the, you know, the police station, eight nine six twenty-five twenty-five, extension six, and I was, I was put over there and I just left a message. And you know, I mean, I, uh, we emailed, council got involved. We're seeing a disconnect right now between, you know, the city, this is not, and this is no, no criticism. That you guys are new, you're getting it down, but we're just telling you from the community, this is what we're seeing. And wondering, one, should we reallocate some positions on this? Because I'm looking at this going, a, you know, half a million dollar budget. We got a director, we already have a director, you're part of the PD. Why do we have two directors when maybe we should change positions around and have a manager or two managers and a couple of officers and a couple of folks who staff it? It's not my job, I'm brainstorming here, but I'm brainstorming because it's not happening. Because people are having some issues out there and we were all in this together and we want it to get better. So maybe when we're looking at May sixth to reallocate positions, maybe we look at the animal services as well, which is part of PD to reallocate some of those positions as well. Because that's a, that's a big chunk of change and it should, it should be running really smoothly. And we should be having more adoption events. I love how you have the dogs out every day, that is awesome, you're doing an awesome job with that. But that trailer, you're not doing as many adoption events, we don't have the, the, the vaccine clinics anymore. We, the licensing, don't know what's happening with that. We've got, we've got some real changes we can make, and this is a big chunk of the police department budget, which is why I'm bringing this up.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, before you say, I just, you know, I, I'm sitting on top of here and just listening, it's a big concern, but in regards to payroll, you have, from what I'm anticipating hearing here is we have a hundred and twenty hours a week that hasn't been filled. And we actually, I'm, I'm going to say it as clear as the only way I can say it. I don't, I don't think that in the past we've had a finance person that can actually do an analysis on the hours worked per day, per week in twenty-four hours a day. And I think that um if you want to add another forty hours a week, which would make it a hundred and sixty hours a week and let her or let them implement it and do an analysis as an actually payroll budgeted week, I think we're a better bid before we spend the money. Because we have a hundred and twenty hours a week right now that hasn't been, hasn't been even filled.
I hear, I agree, and I think we got a, but we got half a million bucks, council member, that's going towards the animal shelter. And I don't think we're getting our money's worth, so how much would we allocate, that's what we're here to do.
Mr. Mayor, so I absolutely understand your concerns and I think that there's a nu, a number of variables that are creating the issues that we're having, first of all. If we have, if we, if we're down those three animal technicians, that means other staff has, hasn't provide that service, which takes away from them getting more field deployment, right? And it's kind of a, a compounding issue that we're seeing. Additionally, um, and I would love to have a conversation offline. Uh, the county, Fresno County Human Services, I mean Fresno Humane, they're not accepting dogs anymore. And what we're seeing is a lot of dogs being dropped off at our jurisdictional limits, right? That now we're having to take care of, and I think people are doing that because we are taking dogs and, and we have not drawn that line in the sand. So it's, right now we're servicing numerous animals that are not from the city of Selma. We have people dumping dogs over the fence, Mr. Councilman Rosiger made mention to that, you know? Um, and I assure you, if we had good data or, you know, information to follow up on that, we absolutely would. We follow up and work with animal services to, to, we've met with citizens that are illegally breeding, right? Or not breeding properly and they're being irresponsible with that. All these things that we do to reduce that population and provide a better service. But it's, it's been a year since we took, a little over a year and a half since we took over. And I understand it's not exactly where it needs to be, but it's a work in progress, right? And we're working towards that.
Totally get that, Chief, but we also have two contracts with Valor and Kingsburg. And I'm looking forward to the advisory committee coming back and making a recommendation. We are making improvements, we definitely are, we're working together better. But right now we're at budget time, so we have to decide how much money we're going to allocate to the animal shelter. And half a million dollars when we're, you know, we have contracts with the other two cities and when we're full and we're not going out, we're not picking the animals up and there's calls going to voicemail, I think it can get better.
We, and just, we are, we're, and I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Mayor, we're working with logistically, right? Little things like how we dispatch calls out instead of the phone call. We're going to take those through our two-five-two-five number and then dispatch them out so that we can start to log some of those uh calls and be more efficient and effective, uh, because that it just, it's the way that it, it, I, we feel be a much more efficient manner to be able to dispatch and get those calls out and then get a um and I can't speak, a conclusion to that and what, what we found. Uh, and it's just like, we get a call of a suspicious subject in the thirty-one hundred block of Hill Street. And I don't quote, I don't know if that's a real address, so, or a hundred block, it's been a while since I've been on patrol. But we respond out, by the time we get the call, make our way out there. Um, we show up into the area, we search, we search a quarter mile, we're not, we're not seeing them. It doesn't mean that person's not there, it just means by that time they've moved from where they are to wherever they are, they've gone into a house, they've hidden, uh, whatever the case may be. And, and when we respond to animal calls, that, sometimes that happens as well. We have dogs that are going back and forth, they're moving around, right? So that creates its own challenges. Um, people tell me all the time, Chief, you know, I, I called, but we didn't see anybody. Well, just because you didn't see them doesn't mean we didn't show up, right? We have to show up and by the time we get there, maybe that person's gone. But, but what we do tell, eventually we're going to hit, right? Eventually we're going to run into that person or our patrolman's going to start going, okay, I keep getting a call in this area. I'm just going to start going there without getting called and hopefully run into that uh suspicious activity and then resolve that matter. And I think that by continuing to get in those calls, again, we might not call every, solve it every time we go, but eventually our field deployers, our field deployed technicians will go, okay, if the dogs are always coming to this location, eventually they're going to run into them when they have time to be out there and actually patrolling more than they are now. Because the reality is they're, they're stuck in, in the, on the site because they're down those three technicians that aren't caring for the animals. And at the end of the day, we have to care for those animals. And, and there's, and that's, it's kind of a rob Peter, pay Paul. And you know, like, just like with staffing at the police department, if we get extremely staffed, that means our, our call times might get extended, there's other services that we might be able to handle as efficiently as we would normally like to. And that's just the reality of it, right?
Been there, done that, so we're going to look at the budgeting and would, and love it that I didn't see a single euthanasia bill. So awesome work, the last month I signed the checks, um, Mayor Pro Tem and I sign our parts on the checks. And uh you're not euthanizing for space, I think that's great. But you're going to get to the point where you have to if we keep bringing all these dogs in. So I think there has to be, you know, I'm going to look, I'm going to look to the advisory committee, I'm going to look to you, police chief, I'm going to look to you, director. And right now we're budgeting and I'm seeing a whole big chunk of change going out to a shelter and that's, that needs to, to, to get better.
I would love to have a conversation kind of offline, you know, to talk about some of the things and maybe get some of your help, Mr. Mayor, on how might we might resolve some of these issues with the county.
Absolutely, love the, love the partnership.
I have a comment. Um, you know, the reality, Chief, um, Director, is that you're not seeing, there's a lot of animals that you're not seeing at the shelter. And that's because second chance, uh, last time I talked to them, they had over thirty animals that they've rescued from the streets, can you imagine? Uh, because nobody responds, nobody, um, city attorney, where are we at as far as putting an ordinance that is against the law to uh dump animals and make it a, a fine or whatever? I know it's against the law, but apparently um it, it's happening, like the chief said, it's happening all the time. We need to put a stop to that, we need to put a stop to all this breeding that's going on because that's not good for Selma and it's not good for the animals.
We, we can get an ordinance to you that next meeting for the first reading and introduction.
Also, I just have a quick question, how many, do we have an ACO officer?
We, we do have one.
We have one?
Yes.
And the procedure for the animal control officer to go out is the call comes in, there's a message at PD, you get the call and then you send out the ACO?
Either we get the message on our phone, a call, or sometimes they do go through PD.
If it's after hours, Chief, what do you guys do?
So we'll respond if it's a vicious animal, Mr. Mayor.
Got it.
And, and, and.
I get the response.
Um, just to, to add to that, we're revamping the logistical and how we dispatch those calls out so that we can have better tracking and auditing. You know, again, these are things that when you start a new program, you're always fine, we're fine tuning the police department, right? With flock cameras, technologies, things change, they enable us to be more efficient and effective. And I think that we're using that same ideology within the animal services technician and throughout our city departments, right? We're always finding ways to be more efficient and effective.
I really like the partnership with the advisory committee and the second chance rescue service. Maybe they could be woven into the shelter a little more if it's going to be hard getting staffing. I'm sure that there are people who would love to volunteer out there and help you folks out. Okay, should we move on to Chief Webster?
All right, good morning, everybody. Um, so the fire department's broken into four divisions, I'll be going through um each division individually. So to start off, um, we'll begin with the administration division. Uh, in that twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget was six hundred and fifty-four thousand, a hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um, the proposed budget for twenty-five, uh, twenty-six, not proposed preliminary budget is six forty-eight, two sixty-six, um, which is a year-over-year change of point zero nine one percent, I'm proud of that number because it's a really little one. Uh, in that are a couple of items that are one-time expenses. The first item you'll see uh in your presentation is the standards of cover strategic plan, community risk assessment for seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, as noted in the presentation, that's a carryover from twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, this fiscal year, uh, we struggled with administrative staff. Um, we have since hired two battalion chiefs, but during that time I didn't have the staff or support in order to accomplish those tasks. So um, we are going to carry that item over into, or the request is to carry that item over into next fiscal year. Uh, the expenses are split between two funds, which is the uh general fund, uh, which would be a balance of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. And then the ambulance fund, uh, again, the same fifty-fifty split, so thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. Uh, that will be reflected uh as a zero expense for this fiscal year. Uh, the next item is the capital project, which is the new fire station campus design. Uh, that item was brought to council um last year with a not-to-exceed amount of um roughly one point one five uh million dollars. And that is currently being funded out of a earmark from Senator Hurtado's office that we received, I believe, in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and just kind of a brief update in that we are uh in the beginning stages of conceptual design. So I hope to bring something to council for you guys to see uh here in the near future. Um, the last item out of fire department administration is a command vehicle, um, as noted in there, that's coming out of a one-eleven account, which is our fleet replacement accounts, not non-general fund item. And that is for the replacement of one of our battalion chief vehicles. Uh, we purchased three Chevy pickups back in twenty-twenty-two, those vehicles were purchased locally uh from Liberty Chevrolet. Um, we are asking for one additional uh vehicle this year to replace one of those vehicles. And the reasoning behind that is our battalion chief vehicles are, all three of them are different. Um, we have one that's four-wheel drive, we have one that's two-wheel drive and another one that's two-wheel drive. And, and uh we're replacing one of the two-wheel drive vehicles um with the uh plan to have all three of our battalion chief vehicles to be four-wheel drive just so they have a better accessibility to respond to incidents. The vehicles that those are replacing are actually utility vehicles or admin vehicles that we utilize. We had previously two uh Ford F-two-fifties uh that were part of our fleet, I think, that they had cycled through, either being chief vehicles or other things. Uh, one of those vehicles, I believe, went to the animal shelter and then the other vehicle, I believe, went to code enforcement. And the police chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but both those vehicles have been uh since repurposed. And so we don't actually have a, a utility is what we call them in the fire service. And so one of those two-wheel drive pickups, once replaced with a new four-wheel drive truck, uh, would be repurposed to one of our utility vehicles. Uh, that would be utilized for logistical purposes within town as well as uh to be made available for single resources to be sent out uh across the state for Master Mutual Aid. Uh, any questions for admin? Yeah, uh, the next division is our fire department operations. Last year's adopted budget was, uh, and I believe Maggie, is this just general fund, correct? Yep, so uh the expenditures for the general fund piece of fire operations was three million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the uh preliminary budget is uh four million, one hun, or, yeah, one hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five, which is a year-over-year change of five point nine-three percent, and that's a, an increase being reflected. Um, special, I guess, one-time purchases or proposals for this upcoming fiscal year um is fire equipment. Uh, that's a request from Measure S and in that it's a total of ninety thousand dollars. It includes uh uh fire equipment for our uh fire operations vehicles, which includes our battalion chief vehicles and our fire apparatus. Um, the Fresno County ECC, which is our dispatching service, they are changing their mobile uh data terminal um hardware and software where we're going away from a laptop computer uh style uh MDT and a uh Sierra wireless um cellular modem uh with a AVL, which is a uh vehicle locator uh beacon. We're going away from those to an iPad, a cellular iPad model. That is a lot easier to use, a lot less expensive uh for replacement um needs. Uh, but the initial charges, uh, we face some challenges in the central valley with heat. And so those iPads, uh, well, any electronic device, I don't know if you've ever left one on your dashboard in the summer, but they shut down because of the extreme heat. And so uh the fire service has been um working with a third party to develop a mount for these iPads that include a cooling fan. That's a pretty robust um uh mount in order to combat the heat because our uh fire apparatus and chief vehicles are uh commonly outside uh during the summer months. And so um the uh part of that equipment costs is roughly thirty thousand dollars is for the replacement or upgrade, I'd say, of iPads mounts as well as some software uh that we need to uh procure in order to be dispatched by Fresno County Fire. Uh, the other items is for our structural firefighting and wildland firefighting PPE. Uh, we have a continuous replacement that occurs every year. Our PPE has a ten-year life cycle at maximum, uh, and based on the utilization, uh, may be more frequent than that. Uh, last year, um, the NFPA adopted, or I'm sorry, OSHA adopted an NFPA standard for inspection and maintenance uh that's very stringent and um challenging to adhere to. And with that, uh, the more stringent inspection guidelines, uh, I would say. And with that, uh, the more stringent inspection guidelines, um, uh, I would say shorten the lifespan of our PPE just because of how, um, how technical it is. And so, uh, working through that, we'll just see, uh, an increased cost in PPE replacement going forward, as well as the maintenance and inspections that are required by OSHA going forward. And then the, uh, the last item that is included in just that item, uh, is a replacement of some fire hoses, roughly twenty thousand dollars. Next item there is, uh, uh, and this is a general fund request, is improvements to our Station Two. Uh, Station Two is located on A Street. It was built in nineteen, in the nineteen-sixties. I don't know the exact year. Um, that currently houses a fire engine company, as well as one of our ALS ambulances. Um, there's four bedrooms there, and it's often that we have a fifth or even sixth body that, um, stay the night there. And so they currently, um, uh, sleep on recliners out in the day space. There is space to, uh, do some interior improvements there, to put up, um, some permanent, uh, walls and, and doorways to create actual sleeping quarters, uh, for one additional body. And then also there's some challenges there with regards to cooling. And so there's, uh, requesting some funding to install some split units to assist with that, just based on the era of that building, the insulation quality, as well as the, uh, what the initial, uh, air conditioning unit was designed for. And then the last item, um, for Fire Department Operations, and this, uh, dollar amount is not included in the actual budget. This is more of a discussion item, um, for guidance from council going forward, is for the replacement of a fire engine. Uh, currently, we have three Type One fire engines in service. We have a two thousand and six Pierce, we have a twenty-seventeen Smeele and a twenty-nineteen Smeele. Uh, the request is for the replacement of our two thousand and six Pierce, which is our, currently our, um, our second line, our reserve, uh, fire engine. Uh, and it's twenty years old, and then our other fire apparatus are getting close to the ten-year mark. Um, depending on usage and, and for our, uh, city, um, recommended replacement intervals are roughly fifteen years for fire apparatus. Uh, the two thousand and six, uh, Pierce is, uh, definitely exhausted that useful ice, life cycle. But we continue to utilize that on a very frequent basis due to the maintenance and repair, um, downtimes associated with our frontline apparatus. Uh, the one point two million dollar mark, um, shockingly enough, is what a fire engine costs in today's market. Uh, it wasn't many years ago that you could purchase one for five hundred thousand, and it wasn't many years ago that you could purchase one for seven hundred thousand. The more, um, I would say, wild number is that, uh, in, if you spent one point two million dollars today, you will not see that fire engine for another two and a half years, because that's how long it takes to actually get one after you order it. And so, um, uh, the options that, um, you will have in front of you is, is how, um, we want to fund the purchase of a fire engine. And there's, uh, a few options. There's really three options. We need to order, uh, a fire engine, um, as early as practicable. Again, with a two-and-a-half-year, uh, forecast, uh, or I'm sorry, delivery time. Um, our options are that we, uh, pay for that fire apparatus, uh, at time of order, which is a prepayment. Uh, with a prepayment, you get roughly four percent a year of savings, which equates to ten percent of savings, which is, uh, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if we were to prepay that out of fund balance, um, you would be looking at, uh, with, and this, that one point two million, just for clarity, does not include sales tax. So, um, so with tax, um, and that ten percent of savings of prepayment, you're looking at just over a million dollars for the fire engine. The option two is you order it now and you pay for it at delivery. Um, there may be some minor changes in cost at, uh, the pre-construction phase, which is when you go over all of the final design detail and all of that, um, but not significant. And then option three, so you'd be paying for that basically in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-eight, when they, when they deliver that. Uh, and then option three would be a lease purchase option, similar to what we did with Engine One Ten. And there are a tremendous amount of variables in how you would structure a lease purchase, uh, uh, agreement with them. And those options are, we can start that, uh, lease purchase at time of order, at time of delivery. You can actually delay the first payment by six months. So we technically, um, could get, if we ordered one with a lease purchase plan, we could actually push the first payment, uh, to fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, which is quite a few years down the road. Uh, but you won't see the prepayment savings, obviously, and, and you would be dependent on whatever the, uh, interest rates are at that time. So there's, uh, you know, some risk associated there, just depending on the market and, uh, economy at that time. I will add that, uh, current interest rates for lease payments are roughly four, four and a half to four point six, uh, percent for, uh, somewhere between a five and ten-year time. Um, but my ask to, to counsel, um, once we get to a draft budget, is, uh, just some, uh, preference, I would say, or, or guidance on, um, how you prefer to proceed with that. My ask is that, um, we can proceed with the ordering of that engine as soon as possible. That two-and-a-half-year mark starts at the date you sign that agreement. So whether that's July first, or August, or today, um, how we fund that, whether it's prepayment, um, partial prepayment, there's, there's a lot of variables there. But we're looking at roughly one point two million. Um, and, and I guess the last piece of that is, that doesn't include the equipment that goes on it as well. That's like the rolling stock, you get some tires, all the way inflated, gas in the tank, maybe, and, and the, and the rig, so.
So, are they selling electrical fire trucks now, or they, would this be electric?
It will not, sure. Uh, they do sell electric fire engines. There's a couple municipalities that have, uh, electric fire engines. One of them's in, I want to say the first one was in LA City, and they got like a fancy fire station to put it in with all the charging infrastructure and all of that. Um, I think that in the Central Valley, we're a long way away from seeing electric fire engines. And the, and the reason that I say that is, um, we are dependent on really long runtimes on our, on our fleet. We're really resource poor as a, as a region. Uh, and what I mean by that is, um, you know, uh, really densely populated areas, they have fire engines every, or I'm sorry, fire stations or fire engines every few blocks, uh, where we have fire engines like every so many miles, like it's, it's, it's quite a difference. And, and our fire engines are staffed with two people and, and really densely populated, they have four or five people. And so the workload and the time that we're on scene is very different, uh, than, um, you know, like a more urban area like Los Angeles or the Bay Area, that kind of thing. Um, there's been some changes to the emissions laws in California as far as pushing back, um, some of the hard deadlines, um, because of all of the challenges, uh, with regards to diesel, um, or heavy, um, heavy-duty vehicles. Um, but in today's Selma, like, we're not, we're not ready for that kind of thing.
You know, it might be coming, the FCRTA, the bus place that does the buses around here.
Yeah.
They're putting a facility in, um, out in the industrial park, and they've found a technology, it's there, to, for the big buses, to get charged. You just, you just drive over, instead of the plug-in thing, now it's linear induction, and that's coming. So I'm wondering, do we wait for the technology? Would it be advisable to, to wait and see if we're going to get that electric technology down the line? Or do we pull the trigger now? Is that your advice?
Um, local transportation is a very different mission than the fire service. And so the benefit of local transportation is they adhere to a schedule. And that schedule, uh, may be an eight-hour day, or it may be a four-hour day. I'm not sure what they're, uh, how they're planning on utilizing those electric vehicles. Um, but I can assure you that that vehicle is going to return home at some scheduled time, and that's going to be based on the duty cycle of whatever that electric motor can operate in. Uh, the fire service, uh, we don't have that. And so we don't have the luxury of returning home when we want, or when our batteries go dead.
Could be called to forest fires, and you might not come back for two weeks.
Percent, yeah. And, and so, uh, the way that we keep going is we call the fuel trucks to us. We don't go to the fuel yard and, and plug in. And so, um, there are times where fire apparatus may be required to pump for over a twenty-four-hour period. And there's just not the technology or the, um, the advancement in batteries to be able to sustain such a thing in today's market. I will also add that the, uh, electric fire engines are about double what the, uh, the cost is of the, yeah, which is a really big number. So, uh, I want to say that first one in LA City was, and that was a few years ago, was the two million, and I think they're closer to two, four, two-six now, so. Um, and that doesn't include, again, that's just like the fire engine and the tires, and the, it does include the charging infrastructure and all the other stuff. Um, but it's really important to recognize that, uh, an electric fire engine is a very purpose-built piece of machinery, uh, with a very specific mission, and, and we don't have the luxury of, uh, you know, our fire engine living just within the city limits of our downtown, or even the city of Selma for that matter.
Last question for you, Chief. The Amberwood, coming in with three hundred homes, there'll be impact fees generated from that next year. Will that, will impact fees because of the impacts on public safety, including fire? Can some of those impact fees go to paper this new truck?
Uh, that would be a council decision as far as the utilization of what funds. Uh, we do have fund balance in Measure S, uh, as well as the ambulance fund. We do have, uh, fund balance as well in, uh, fire impact fees. Um, I will add that in the, uh, the item mentioned in the previous slide, which is the design of the new fire station. Um, there's some significant costs on the horizon for the city of Selma with regards to, uh, to that project. And so, um, impact fees will be utilized, I'm sure, on, on something, and it's really up to you guys to determine. Um, my priorities are always to keep day-to-day operations going, and replacing that fire engine is an absolute need for this organization to maintain day-to-day operations. Um, you know, so, uh, again, we're going to bring you our best recommendations. Um, there's, uh, you know, there's definitely some options there. I would say, I guess, the last thing, if you're asking for a recommendation, my recommendation would be to prepay the, uh, the fire engine, because you see that hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings, um, which can buy not all of the equipment, but a good chunk of the equipment that's going to be placed on that fire apparatus in the future, in the two and a half years from now, that we see that. Um, but again, that's a, that's a council decision, um, you know, so. Thank you.
Luke, can I ask you? I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but I'd like to get an update on our, on the new fire station.
Sure.
So, I mean, I know you mentioned about getting a design, but where is that coming? I mean, are we getting closer to, are you still looking for funding? Where, where are we with that?
Yeah, so, um, I'll give you just, uh, well, I'll give you as much information as you want. We'll give you kind of a high-level overview of where we're at with that. Um, so we went into agreement with Griffin Structures, uh, last year, I don't remember the date. Um, but that was for, uh, master architect and, uh, construction management services. And really, their direction was to, um, do the preliminary design and bridging documents for a design-build entity to then come in and, and build or, uh, bid the, the project. And so, um, I have been working with Director Hahn, uh, who's not present today, uh, as well as, um, the city manager's office. We've gone through the, uh, schematic design, which is where we discuss what our space needs are and operational things. Uh, in that discussion, uh, my direction, um, from the city manager's office was to incorporate a fire station and headquarters, which is the temporary building we have across the street, to put both of those, both of those pieces on one campus. Um, and so I've been working with Griffin's, uh, design team and their architectural firm that they partner with, which is APE, I believe. I may be wrong, but I think it's AP. Um, and so in that, we've gone through, uh, again, the schematic design, which is really where we pick how many rooms and how many bathrooms and how many apays and all of that. Um, and with that, we have, uh, we've come to the beginning phases of conceptual design, where this thing actually starts to look like a fire station, uh, a building. It's not like it doesn't, we don't have renderings of like the aesthetics or anything like that, but we have more of a, um, like a site plan. Yeah, thank you. So, um, so with that, um, there is, uh, concurrent project that's happening, which is the relocation of our EMS staff. Um, I have a, um, a staff report in the works for the May sixth, uh, council meeting. Um, I'm hoping to get on the agenda for that, to give you an overview of that project as well. Um, and, and, and ultimately, what's happening is we're, um, we're going to, or I'm going to request that those two projects be brought together under the design of Griffin Structures to, to proceed with that. Um, my priorities for the Fire Department, uh, my number one priority today is to get my EMS personnel relocated from the Rose Avenue property. Uh, I had received a question about, uh, check register maybe a month or so ago about the rent for that. Uh, we just entered into, um, a new lease agreement with them, which was for a period of six months with two, um, options to extend for three-month period, or three, two, three-month periods. Um, I've been working over the last year and some change on different options to bring to you guys for consideration, uh, to relocate or rehouse our EMS facility. Um, currently, the Rose Avenue, um, location, it was previously utilized by American Ambulance when we were contracting with them to provide EMS services. Uh, that building has three bedrooms in it, a very small living quarters and a small kitchen. Uh, our challenges are that we have four staff members that are in that facility. And so there are times where, um, uh, uh, folks of the opposite sex have to share a bedroom, uh, which, which, um, brings some concerns about personnel safety as well as privacy matters. And so I've been working to, um, really, uh, figure out a multitude of options. We looked at the mosquito abatement building, uh, as a, as an option, and went through kind of a preliminary design process or feasibility study, uh, to go into partnership with them to utilize their buildings. It's currently unoccupied, and it would be a great site for us to utilize. That ended up not being feasible for us. Um, we actually procure, or in the process, I'd say, uh, of procuring, uh, two sets or two pairs of portable classrooms from the school district to repurpose into kind of a temporary facility like what we have, uh, at our headquarters across the street. Um, the preliminary plan was to, uh, um, bring a decisionary package to you guys at council, um, which we're, again, planning on bringing at the next council meeting, um, to concurrently, um, relocate them into a temporary site. And through further discussion and, um, the really design discussions, uh, we've come up with a, a concept that's going to best serve the city from my perspective, um, to incorporate that facility into the, um, fire station campus. Um, the reason that these projects are happening concurrently, um, really from a high level, is cost and demand. Um, I, I need that EMS facility yesterday is, is really when I need it. Um, there's some significant challenges and, and really risk associated with where our EMS folks are housed today. Um, I, that's my number one priority, is to get that facility up and operating. Um, the second component of that is the, um, the fire station campus. Um, due to foreseen cost, um, challenges, um, we're designing that into a, really, now it's a three-phase, but the fire station specifically, um, we started with a two-phased design process where there would be the operations component, which is simply a fire station, uh, with the ability to add a second phase, which would be the administrative, um, components. When we started this project, um, uh, cost estimates were roughly, um, in the ballpark of eight hundred to a thousand dollars per square foot. Um, that has since passed, and, and now, um, cost estimates are looking for, construction costs are roughly fifteen hundred a square foot, um, which is a tremendous amount of money. And so, uh, the, the fire station and headquarters is roughly, uh, a fifteen thousand square foot structure, which is like in the ballpark of twenty to twenty-six million dollars. It's, it's a ton of money. Um, and so, uh, you know, we have four and a half million dollars from Senator Hurtado's office, but that doesn't get us very far at fifteen hundred dollars a square foot. And so, um, you know, my, my goal and my job is to ensure that we can provide services to the city. Um, we do that by providing ambulance. Um, we do that by providing ambulance services as well as fire protection services with fire companies. Uh, my EMS staff needs to be relocated and so again, um. The the next step for me is to bring you guys a proposal to incorporate Griffin Structures to design. Um, that piece of this overall campus in that I will be sharing with you kind of the overall concept. Uh, and then at a future date, I will be bringing you guys some conceptual designs and the actual fire station. Uh, design itself for uh decisions to be made with regards to aesthetics and that kind of thing. Um, but it's gonna, it's gonna be some years down the road, I think, to be able to fund or fully fund that project, even the. Um, the just the phase, we were calling it phase zero, phase one and phase two, but I'm gonna call phase one the EMS camp or the EMS facility. Phase two would be the fire station and phase three would be the admin uh component of that. Um, I I think that we can pay for the EMS facility out of uh fund balance uh today. Um, I think that it's gonna take a little bit of creativity and um some uh some savings to be able to. Fund the phase two, which is the fire station and then. Uh, we're looking at some kind of creative ways for uh grant funding for the admin side. There's some brick grants available. Um, uh, by incorporating some emergency uh operations center and uh really like disaster kind of focused. Uh, there's funding out there for that and so we're, we're trying to leverage those funding opportunities to um to really. Maximize the amount of outside dollars we can get because this is a, it's a big project and uh. Um, you know, we, the unfortunate part is is things aren't getting cheaper and uh.
Do you put the modulars where the the fire station will ultimately go? They're at Huntsman and Thompson?
It will be. Yes, so that um, that lot, the lot itself is four and a half acres. We plan on utilizing about two and a quarter acres of that, so about half. Um, and and that, the modulars and we're kind of up in the air right now on uh modulars or stick frame. We're kind of in the process of that. Um, to figure out cost effectiveness and long term and all that. I think there's some opportunities in the future for, you know, PD substation or some other type of. Um, public safety tool and like the way down the road, so there may be benefit in stick framing it versus a a modular, but. With that being said, the actual design of the overall campus incorporates. Those three facilities, the fire station and the admin will actually be connected. The EMS facility will be an independent structure which can be designed and constructed very independently.
Will that make A Street redundant? So could the city sell that, close it? And sell it?
I missed the first.
A Street? Would that make the A Street station redundant?
It it doesn't. Um, today, I think that in the future, there's definitely opportunity to replace that A Street.
When the new face station goes in. Option one, two and three. When when it all goes in, when the new station comes in.
The A Street station, I don't foresee being replaced until a station on more on like the west side of, I'm sorry, not west. The east side of town like ro- out that way would would be over there and so um. I I don't believe that it's an actual just replacement of that facility. Our plan is to house a fire company in that station as well, so there'll.
How much is the I G T generating on an annual basis now?
Uh, just I G T?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the um, when you say I G T.
Whatever they're calling it.
The rate range program, yeah, so the uh, the rate range program uh for this fiscal year, uh we netted. Um, two point seven five million is just is like two point seven four nine, something like that, so two point seven million. Um, in uh, I call that net revenues. We we adjusted how we.
Send your money back and then you get more.
Yeah, and so the, so the new money we got was we we wired them two point five and they sent us whatever the difference is plus two point seven million. Yeah, so. Um, so the rate range program, we're um at two point seven. I think next year we should see a little bit of an increase there. Um, I'm budgeting two point eight million just as a conservative figure, but I think that uh or I'm proposing that, I guess. Um, but I I anticipate it's gonna be a little bit higher than that, um based on our preliminary um submissions and. Um, what the figures that they gave us. Um.
And then measure S, about a million bucks in that fund. You guys get a third of that. How much of measure S can you bring to bear on the, at least EMS? For current expenses. You're looking for funding for EMS right now, is that correct?
I I believe, sir, that we can fund the EMS facility. Um, actually, we could expend the the four point five million that was given to us by Senator Hurtado.
Can you use that for the EMS structure?
Absolutely, because it's a, it's a fire facility campus and EMS is under the fire department. Uh, what that funding says is fire station. Uh, the definition of that, in my opinion, is like that is, it's part of the fire station campus, uh which is has three phases, an EMS quarters. A fire station that houses fire operations people, um and then admin eventually and so. Um, going back to the the funding sources, um, you know, we have a combination. We do get revenue from the. Uh, from ambulance billing, uh pretty significant amount there. Um, we get revenue from measure S, as you know, the impact fees from the new developments. Uh, grant funding opportunities, again, like I discussed, and then uh then components with measure S as well. Um, we like to share the measure S money with our friends uh across the table over there, the police department, because they have needs too and don't.
Butters appreciate that.
Yep, and um, and so as as we get closer, um, I think that we'll have to have some discussions on about how we phase that in and then also the uh. The funding opportunities that um, you know, that are out there at the time, but. Uh, you know, the uh, I wish we could call Senator Hurtado and say, hey, fire stations don't cost four and a half million.
He's in a new district now, unfortunately.
Yeah, so um, anyway, so uh it'd be cool if it just said build fire station with no amount, right? But we're not there, so um. Again, my absolute needs uh are to get that EMS facility built uh as quickly uh as possible. And then the next need would be to get our fire operations uh located there and then the last phase of that is gonna be to relocate our fire administration. From the portables across the street uh up to that facility as well. How's that for a high level overview of where we're at?
Got an idea of your priorities. Thank you.
Okay, so um, I got two more divisions to go through and then.
If I may, chief, um, real quick, we do have lunch for council, um, that is available right now. If chief wants to continue, um, I. I mean, if council wants to take a break or continue, it's it's up to you, but I've just been informed that uh lunch is available. Great. And everybody here is in included, right? Staff's included, council's included. All right, sounds good. Let's take a break. We'll come back and. Get started pretty soon. Everybody good with a twenty minute break for lunch?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back. Twelve thirty five.
Ready, sir. Any other questions on fire department operations? There's a lot of stuff thrown at you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I know it's on your wish list, so when do you want that truck?
What's that?
When do you want that truck?
Which which one?
The one million, one and a half million, the.
Uh, tomorrow, sir, yeah. So I would like to order it as soon as possible, but the build time is two and a half years.
But the sooner we order it, the better, right?
The sooner we order it, the sooner we'll start that uh, two and a half year clock.
Looking at two of them already gonna be, one's two oh six, one's two oh seven. I don't know.
What's that?
Right, didn't you say one's two two thousand and six? That's when we want to replace, right?
Yep, yes.
And then the next one was.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, and so um, again with a fifteen year replacement cycle, uh, the fifteen years for that would be twenty thirty two. Um, and so we don't know what it's gonna look like. I will say that there is some legislative efforts on um, impacting the fire apparatus uh, build environment, so um, there's some, I don't know, efforts to try to prevent some antitrust law stuff and in any way, they're trying to minimize the amount of time it takes us. Like we, we need fire engines and we don't need them. Two and a half years is actually pretty quick. Pierce, the company that uh, we're replacing, we're gonna replace that with a Smeal, but Pierce is looking at roughly four years to replace a uh, a fire engine. And uh, and I don't know, stop me if this is too much information, but um, a lot of that has to do with the amount of money that was pumped into the system during COVID, and so there was a lot of ARPA funds and and all this stuff. And um, fire departments, as well as any municipality, they're always forced to do as much with as little as possible. And so as soon as you get one times money to spend, everybody's got a big old long laundry list. And fire engines are one of those things that we use and they're um, literally like, they're uh, you know, they're pretty much beat by the time we're done with them because, you know, they just, they're driven hard, they're pumped all the time. And so um, so anyway, um, that's what we're looking at. So twenty thirty maybe, uh, twenty thirty one, somewhere around there. I'll be asking you for another fire engine and then just a couple of years after that for the other one. So um, you asked a question about fleet maintenance. Uh, this year, just for our fire apparatus, we're looking about seventy five grand in in repair costs uh, year to date. So uh, we've, those rigs, uh, we've had some pretty significant repairs, uh, just related to their age um, and maintenance stuff, so.
These are all US companies that make these fire trucks, but do they incorporate foreign made components? And if so, is this the best time to be ordering, given the tariff environment? Has that really hit the fire truck automotive industry?
I don't know that we've seen actual impacts of some of the tariffs with regards to some of that stuff. I mean, yes, so the first part of your question is, are they built in the US? Yes. Uh, the ones that we purchased, the Smills are um, uh, so actually they're built. Um, each one is built, you know, piece by piece in Nebraska. Um, as far as the parts, you know, there, there's a, I don't even know how many parts are on those things, but there's switches and electronics and computers. I like, I don't know where that stuff comes from, all over the place. Um, is there a good time? Um, I feel like there's no good time to buy a one point two million dollar fire engine. I think that's crazy, but I don't think that that cost is gonna go backwards. And I don't know, um, I've been watching the fire apparatus kind of world over the last couple of years, thinking that that bubble would pop with regards to build times and costs. Uh, and that has yet to happen, sir. And we're quite a few years past uh, the pandemic and all of those one time monies that flooded the system. And 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 so um, I I would say that our demand for that, um, we're at a position where we staff our squad, which is our big monster truck looking fire engine. Uh, that thing's not designed to fight a house fire, I can tell you that. And we're you, we're um, forced to utilize that piece of equipment as a frontline fire engine often because um, of our fleet maintenance demands. Uh, the, our two thousand and six engine is long in the tooth, so to speak, and the other ones require maintenance all the time. And so um, we need that engine, you know, ASAP, just to be able to fulfill our mission, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do we want to put that as a future agenda item? I mean, or or do we wait till after the budget?
It'll be a future budget item. Like, like I said at the beginning, we need to know how much money we have. Because economics is the art of rational decision making with scarce resources. So there, you're, nobody's gonna get everything that they want. There're gonna be trade offs. So, but we have to know how much of the pie we can allocate towards that. And when our finance director can give us good advice, I think, in terms of trade offs.
At this point?
Well, we won't know.
And 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 we're still waiting on some of the revenue numbers from from our consultants. The thing I will say is the reason it was presented um, as an item with the dollar amount and the options were presented is so that we could plan accordingly, because there is a need for that fire apparatus. And we can kind of, as the mayor said, find a solution or compromise on whether or not we can pay for it all up. whether or not we can pay for it all upfront, if we have the revenue to do so, or we finance, lease it, what have you. We have options to do that, but we wanted to identify it as one of the needs for the department.
Good to have a finance director to look at those various options and see which is the most cost-effective.
Okay, moving on to fire department prevention. Um, this fund pays for our, oh, I'm sorry, were there any further questions on operations before I move on? Okay, so fire prevention, um, this fund um, pays for our fire marshal, as well as some fire prevention items in there. Um, this year is a code cycle update. So with that, we uh, will be bringing to you the adoption of the updated fire code, as well as the um, building department will bring you the update of all the other codes that we have to abide by. Um, the books for our departments, roughly fifteen hundred dollars for that. Uh, you will see on here that our adopted budget was two eighty-one or two hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty dollars, and the preliminary budget is three forty-eight-two-nine with a twenty-one percent increase. Um, I, that was a little bit of a shocker to me. I looked through it briefly and um, I identified a miscalculation on salaries of roughly twenty thousand dollars. And then uh, there was a couple of internal fun or internal service charges that we're gonna discuss that I caught late. Um, so we'll be working on that internally. I don't anticipate an actual twenty-one percent increase in this uh, fund going forward. So um, but it's so, anyway, outside of that, no other uh, one-time items are being requested. And then the last division uh, is our ambulance division. This uh, division is uh, fully funded through our ambulance fund, which is one of our enterprise funds here in the city. Last year's adopted budget uh, was five million, nine thousand, seven forty-three, and our preliminary budget is five million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-five, uh, with a year-over-year change of an increase of two point one-three uh, percent. Some um, some highlights here, and there's one correction, but the highlights are the PPG um, IGT wire payments. Um, that was a new thing that we budgeted for last year. Um, that's a quarterly wire transfer that we um, provide to DHCS. And that's our um, that's our piece of the non-federal shared for that program to participate in. Um, I don't want to bore you with all the details of how that number's figured out, but ultimately um, that's a projection. There's some variability there, but it should be very close to what that cost is. And that is an actual expense line item, unlike the rate range program where we just uh, show a uh, a net revenue in the rate program. This we actually show as an expense because we receive the funds from that program as part of our ambulance billing collections. Um, and that's a rate add-on for Medi-Cal uh, fee-for-service and Medi-Cal managed care plans. And this year's rate is, I want to say a thousand and sixty-five dollars uh, per qualifying call for that. Um, the next items, and again, these are all items that are gonna be expensed out of the um, ambulance fund, with the exception of the EMS station relocation. Um, that were actually uh, was in a, I'm sorry, a um, that's gonna be recommended to be funded out of that state earmark money, that four and a half million that um, was provided from Senator Hurtado's office, not from the ambulance fund itself. Um, the next item is a new ambulance. Uh, council approved the purchase of a new ambulance last fiscal year. Uh, we've been told we're going to be receiving that ambulance uh, no later than the end of the week for the last six weeks. Uh, so I think we're getting closer. Um, but uh, there's challenges with uh, with fleet vehicles. Um, that vehicle comes from a company called Leader. Uh, we purchased that through a cooperative agreement through Sourcewell. Uh, it's a Mercedes-Benz Sprinter platform, just like the remainder of our fleet, with the exception of our oldest ambulance. Um, the one we ordered last year will be our sixth uh, ambulance to our fleet. The one I'm rec- uh, requesting for this next year uh, will be our seventh ambulance, but it will be replacing uh, an ambulance in our fleet that's reached its um, its functional service life. Through calculations and utilization of those, we anticipate having to purchase a new ambulance annually for the foreseeable future. Um, we run three ambulances frontline. We have three ambulances in reserve because those ambulances have mechanical problems and maintenance needs that are pretty aggressive. Um, each ambulance that we run, uh, well, um, we average about two hundred and fifty thousand miles a year in our ambulance fleet, which is quite a bit. And so that gets shared amongst the three frontline ambulances and then the three that are placed in reserve status. So um, that's that. Last year's ambulance was roughly three hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what I requested because that ambulance included all of the equipment associated with that, which is the gurney, the power load, the cardiac monitor, uh, stair chair and all the other equipment that goes with it. This ambulance, as you can see, is listed at two hundred and eighty thousand. And what you're seeing the difference there is, is the cost of a cardiac monitor. Uh, cardiac monitors have a ten-year lifecycle. Um, and so we have cardiac monitors that are actually outside of that lifecycle. They're greater than ten years old, and we can no longer service them uh, because the company that makes them, they don't make parts for them or service them after ten years. Uh, my EMS supervisor, Daniel Diaz, has been working very closely with one of the cardiac monitor providers and um, proposed a plan to me, which is a uh, lease-purchase uh, plan for cardiac monitors. We currently utilize nine uh, in our department. Um, the proposal that was brought to me is for a six-year uh, lease purchase for nine cardiac monitors. It costs uh, a hundred and five thousand dollars a year for those six years. At the sixth year, we'll be able to buy each of those um, cardiac monitors for a dollar. Uh, and we'll be able to use them for the remainder of their four-year lifespan, and then we can start a new cycle. Uh, in that time, um, those monitors will have a full replacement warranty for any of the damage or maintenance costs. It's actually a full maintenance plan and replacement warranty. Uh, we currently spend about thirty-five thousand dollars a year on maintenance and repairs for our cardiac monitors. Um, so all in all, the city saves actually a pretty significant amount of money. Like, I think their business plan may be skewed a little bit. I don't know. We've double, had them double-check their math, but um, so with that, my recommendation is to um, jump on board of that program. Again, there's a purchase option. So at year six, we will own the cardiac monitors if we choose, or we can trade them in for the next latest and greatest thing, if such thing exists. Um, but with that, um, the kind of a, a business model that I've always abided by is to replace them with the ambulance itself. But now that they're, um, they're updating them so frequently for the uh, continuity of use and the training of our personnel, um, having just one make and model is a much better system for us. So we have the exact same cardiac monitor on every single piece of equipment, the same uh, muscle memory is utilized by our staff when they're in stressful and emergent situations. Um, and so just replacing them all at once is is uh, there's many benefits to that. And the cost of that program, I know that um, lease purchases, like you, I've had the questions asked, I think, by one of the council members of like, who's making the money here? Obviously, the company is making some money, but doing the math on actual replacement costs and the maintenance and repairs and all that, it's actually a very cost-effective tool, and there's a significant amount of benefit there. And that's why uh, the recommendation's being brought to you. Um, that concludes the presentation for the fire department, unless you guys have any uh, questions.
Any questions for the fire chief?
Yeah, okay. With the new fire ambulance, so we'll have three altogether?
Well, that, I'm sorry, may I say your question?
If we, the three, the new ambulances, purchase new ambulances, we'll have three out in the city of Selma or?
So uh, to date, like today, we have three ALS ambulances that we staff twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. We're actually in the process, and one of our goals for last fiscal year was to bring on a fourth ambulance in a twelve-hour capacity. Uh, we don't have the fleet available to accomplish that. We do have the um, the call demand. Um, but because we are um, constantly just short ambulances, we're unable to do that. Going forward, um, the plan is to have three ambulances online with a fourth twelve-hour ambulance. Um.
You guys, I know you guys are busy. I see. I mean, you guys are twenty-four-seven.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, my, here you go.
Not busy. My staff.
I mean, your staff is, but I mean, you, you are actually busy, and that, and that's why I ask you on the ambulance, would, a fourth one will alleviate some of the?
So the ambulance I'm requesting this year will actually be a sixth ambulance. Um, it's technically a seventh, but one of ours, um, we have five today, a sixth one should show up any day now, and then the one we were gonna order, uh, if approved, it, you know, the build time on those are not super fast. They're not as slow as a fire engine, but they're um, six months, maybe eight months. Um, and that'll bring on a sixth, or I'm sorry, a seventh uh, ambulance to our fleet. We plan on putting one kind of in a very deep reserve status where we just use emergency purposes with the intent of staffing three ALS ambulances twenty-four-seven and a fourth ambulance on a um, based on like peak hours and usage um, for a um, time period during the week.
Now, that, that'll generate a little more, I mean, more revenue as far as in the ambulance service. Am I correct? As far, I mean, yeah, quite a bit, quite a bit.
So the um, yes, the, my goal is that if we're bringing on an ambulance, that it's able to sustain itself through the ambulance fund. And so um, we watch those figures very closely, and we have a pretty good understanding of what our cost recovery is um, based on unit utilization. And um, and so the uh, kind of as an incremental approach to to bringing on that ambulance, our goal is uh, we're able to run an analysis that shows our peak usage of the EMS system and to um, incorporate that fourth ambulance during those times going forward.
The reason why I'm asking that question, because with, with the fourth expanding operation, that'll generate enough revenue to it fund the new fire station because it'd be a part of it, will not be a part of that unit, safe, public safety under that issue, under that requirement?
The revenues that are received through all of the ambulance billing programs that we have um, for twenty-three, twenty-four year to date, we're averaging about fourteen hundred and thirty dollars per billable call, which is a transport or a uh, a call where our ambulance arrives unseen and assesses a patient. Um, we anticipate that number to increase a little bit over the course of the next year just because uh, underutilized federal programs that are still uh, kind of, I don't even know, they weren't um, ruled out very well. And so there's still some confusion there um, from some of our payers. Um, but with that being said, uh, our forecast is that the um, that fourth ambulance, whatever calls that it would run, um, we have to account for the calls that would be run regardless of that call was, or if that car was in service, or if the ambulance was in service. Um, but we anticipate putting it into um, like a twelve-hour status, four to five days a week would cover its expenses. With regards to the invoice, or um, revenues for the EMS division as a whole, um, over the course of uh, the last two fiscal years, so starting twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, I started here in August of twenty-three. Um, our EMS revenue uh, because of some of the federal programs, as well as the restructuring of our um, of our department and how we deal with the QA, um, our revenues have increased uh, annually about two point eight million dollars. So um, we're doing a great job on, on recovering the um, charges that we bill to the community. I know uh, you had asked those questions when we brought the um, fee schedule update. Um, and so uh, compliments to my EMS supervisor and uh, Battalion Chief Fulner. Um, they've really improved upon the efficiencies of how that program operates. Uh, going back to your question about the funding for the fire station, uh, that the, I believe that, you know, depending on council's decisions, that the EMS, uh, or I'm sorry, the ambulance division itself could um, fund some debt service for the fire service in the future, if you wanted to go down that road. Um, but it's still gonna take some years. I mean, even um, you know, if if you were to theoretically have a two million dollar surplus annually in the ambulance division, it would take ten to twelve and a half years to fund a fire station that costs twenty-four million dollars. And so um, i- it's gonna, it's gonna take some work on our end to really figure out how we're gonna structure that. But I I will say that bringing on that fourth ambulance will increase our uh, our revenues, certainly to, to pay for the ambulance that's in service. Um, our fee structures, we, you know, they're based on cost recovery, right? And so we don't necessarily structure our fees to profit off of those or to create margin, so to speak. And so when we went through the study for cost recovery, uh, we considered what our costs were um, impacts to our CIP programs and all those kinds of things, uh, but it's not gonna pay for it in like the next three years by any means.
Did you have to bring on an employee? Couple of employees per the ambulances, the fourth one?
Uh, the initial plan is to, uh, I'm looking at this program as kind of a study. Um, and and so our plan is to fund that with our per diem staff. Uh, we currently have ten part-time staff members, and our, our plan is to, to fulfill that through part-time um, staffing uh, for now. And then once we can identify that it is ensure um, sustainable on its own, then we'll, we'll bring a decision back to council to.
In other words, it pays for itself.
That's, that's my goal, sir.
And then the per diem, how is that different than a full-time regular EMS employee?
Per diem staff member is a part-time employee, so they're not subject to all of the same benefits that a full-time employee is. So there's savings with regards to CalPERS, um, with a few exceptions that I wouldn't worry about. And then um, uh, the other associated benefits with that, their hourly rate is uh, a bit, um, it's on the higher range of our salary schedule for a full-time paramedic. Uh, but the benefit is that you don't, you can use them as you need them. You don't have to like put them on a schedule, so to speak. And so we utilize them today, actually, to minimize our overtime expenses in our EMS division. Uh, our salary, or I'm sorry, salary, our uh, scheduling policy is such that our per diem staff has an ability to select shifts. Uh, and if they're not available, then we move on to full-time staff that would be compensated at time and a half. And so there's a, it's a, uh, it's a saving strategy for, you know, running that department efficiently, uh, and then also.
Didn't have it, then it would be just so Kings River that would go out and make those ambulance calls and make the revenue on those ambulance calls. Or whoever is that part of that sharing agreement?
Yeah, so we share resources with the entire CCMSA system. So all Fresno County, it's closest available ambulance. So we run calls in Kingsburg, Parleyer, Fowler, Fresno, Clovis, like we run calls all over the place. Our primary response area um, is our exclusive operating area that we got adopted last year. And um, and so we share those. But when our vehicles are uh, assigned to calls, they're not available to take more calls. And so uh, we pay attention very closely to the calls we turn over to different agencies because that's a loss of revenue. And also, I feel that our ambulances provide uh, people with better customer service than every other ambulance out there. I'm biased, but uh, and so I prefer my staff to be out there helping our citizens over others.
How many calls get turned over to other agencies? Twenty-five percent or twenty percent or?
Um, it's not, it's not that high, or I'd be coming to you asking for another full round of people. Um, it varies on the month, and I want to say it's maybe of the um, we run fifty-four hundred calls a year. I want to say it's like four hundred and thirty-two or something like that calls a month that we're running, and we turn over maybe um, fifteen to twenty calls. Uh, but with that being said, we also restructured our response to the uh, hospital um, last year, which gave us a reduction of calls of maybe uh, five hundred calls a year, um, which is pretty significant. Um, we had been just like, we were transporting their patients without recovering costs. And so um, we stopped that in twenty, well, when I got here. And uh, we're just in the process now of starting negotiations with them for a service uh, agreement that I hope to bring to you um, sometime near the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Any other questions to the fire chief? Anybody? Any questions? Anybody online or on the phone with a question for the fire chief?
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thanks for your presentation, chief. Moving on. Community services.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, community services, um, the budget proposed is um, currently as, as uh, constituted about a fourteen percent increase. Um, that includes recreation, senior citi-, you know, the senior center um, and the programs they have down at the senior center, uh, cultural arts, the nutrition program at the senior center, as well as recreational sports. Um, the community services is available for questions as well. Um, we do have some personnel in there. We have some facility upgrades uh, as part of that. Some of our um, you know, uh, existing facilities do have uh, needs for the patrons of those. Um, you know, uh, existing facilities do have uh needs for the patrons of those facilities, so uh, we're available for questions if there are any.
Any questions for City Manager Queen?
I have a question. Um, I know we we had asked about this before, the uh Kaiser Foundation donates so much money. That that Kaiser Foundation uh grant used to be part of um. Community services, it was for the kids that couldn't afford to play, let's say uh baseball, cause you know, they came from the barrio and it's a hundred dollars and you got three kids and it's three hundred dollars. So none of your kids got to play because they couldn't afford it? The Kaiser Foundation grant used to fund that and then all of a sudden it got taken away because of COVID. Is that ever going back to uh that program, I mean, what it was intended to be?
Um, so my understanding right now is we reapply for that funding every single year. But the way that they allocate that funding has now shifted gears because of COVID. And so um, we still apply for twenty-five thousand dollars every year and at this time it is just geared towards senior meals. And so that helps um offset the price of the senior meals that we provide at the senior center.
What about the kids though, I mean, that wasn't the intention of the grant. Uh, I understand that you have senior meals, but isn't the senior meal subsidized by some other program, ELC or somebody?
Not at this time, we have not um reapplied for that funding. Um, I do have a meeting scheduled next week with FM AAA to to um just receive some additional information. Um, to see if we can qualify for that program for this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, yeah, cause Jim and I toured the new Kaiser um building, a beautiful building. And uh, we were talking to the guy who works with cities and stuff and I was talking to him about building uh some baseball fields out here, so. He said, yeah, there's a possibility, you know, talk to us. But I also told, asked him about the grant and he says, well, you can apply for other grants through the foundation too. You know, it's kinda, I think it's kinda sad, there's still a lot of people from my area, you know, cause a lot of the parents are farm workers and. If you have three kids, you can't afford three hundred dollars to put your kids in, and that was the the way it was back then. What we did is we had an application, they applied, and if they met the criteria, we paid for those kids and you know, who knows what they're doing out there, you know? I know they're not playing baseball, so.
I could definitely reach out to my source at Kaiser and see if I can get any additional information regarding that. Um, but for this upcoming fiscal year, our goal is to apply for FM AAA. And so um, I already did submit the application for the twenty-five thousand dollars through Kaiser and so I'm pending approval on that. Usually that comes about mid to late May.
Okay, I'll make contact with the person, cause he said, call me, we'll sit down and talk about it, you know, they got money. Kaiser has a lot of money, that be- that's a beautiful building there, I don't know if you, if you're a Kaiser member or whatnot, but go see it, it's gonna be a beautiful building.
Council member will add that to our list of grants uh that we do research on, our grants manager maintains a list, we'll add that to uh potential revenues for next year.
And so um, fourteen percent, what is this, what's the, what's the increase for, a hundred and eighty thousand?
It varies throughout um multiple um portions of our department. And so um, in our recreation fund, um, that's gonna be our forty-one hundred, which is gonna be a lot of our special events that we do. And so we're just allocating more um, more funding for that as we're growing our programs. Um, senior citizens, the same thing, um, so senior citizens specifically, um. I, not that I created, but um, we worked on budgeting uh all of our expenses for this upcoming year. And so that's gonna include all of our dances, um, we're trying to incorporate um a new programming for them, that's gonna include the senior trips. And so um, it's really more of a breakdown of what we're already offering. Um, cultural arts, I can have Nicolette touch on that, I know that she had some items that that may be urgent on her. Um, on her budget, but senior nutrition, it's the same thing, the price of meals are going up. Um, and then the the cost of our supplies just to operate um our senior program um for nutrition. So um, the state of California no longer allows you to use styrofoam for any of your um materials. And so now we have to have everything that's compostable and those prices have just increased. And so um, I did um budget accordingly for that, what I'm assuming or or just not assuming. What I'm estimating what that we're gonna be needing for this upcoming year because we supply plates, napkins, spoons, forks, cups, bowls. All the, all the good stuff that we need for um our senior meal program.
Excuse me real quick, just, just, can we, can, just going back to what we were talking about in the past is, can we just have a broken down? Um, in regards to, and 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 I speak in regards to, I know that the senior center, cultural center, everybody's gonna have their needs and their wants, right? It it'd be nice to come back on May sixth with a breakdown of individual items, broken down with what the cost factor is. Cause to me, and and I appreciate the presentation, but. I've been saying this for the, for a while that, you know, in regards to the senior center, I understand that, you know, what the actual cost is and what the dividend is to the residents. What I mean by that is this, what our investment is purchased against what we're getting out of. And and if the senior center is 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 expending on plates and sporks, is that, br- break it down, tell us what it is. On on May sixth, break it down, give us, if that fourteen percent increase a cultivates. That the seniors is lacking another thirty thousand, but the cultures, the uh cultural arts centers lacking eighty thousand? Well, what the, what's the dividends, what are we gonna get in return, that's what I wanna know individually, what what every department head is gonna be spending, what's the dividend, what am I gonna get back? So if you can bring that back versus, we can have a conversation all we want, but right now you're just putting a fourteen percent increase and we don't see an actual number versus what we're going, what what's going to. And that, that to me is a problem, so I'd rather just give us the the discussion, but let's not.
The fourteen percent is more than paper plates and napkins, it really is, it's gotta be, there's, there's something else in there.
Plus, we just invested in a brand new stove, I mean, those were very pricey.
New stoves.
So, two new stoves, so that's gonna be another question that I have, is we invested in that, are we gonna have someone that's gonna be providing meals? To offset some of this cost, because why would we go purchase such a high-priced stove if no one's gonna use it?
Right, and so typically for the stove, um, staff has in the past done in-house meals to help offset that cost. But with the FM AAA program that we're looking to apply for this upcoming fiscal year.
What does that them AAA stand for?
My apologies, it's the Fresno Madera Agency on Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. And so um, they really represent all of our senior citizens here in Fresno County, Fresno and Madera County. And so through them, they get um, they provide um grant funding through the state of California to um provide congregate meals at the senior center. Or not just our senior center, but multiple senior centers here in the valley. And so um, through that funding, if we do um, if we do get awarded funding through them, they pay the price of the meal directly. And so there is a chance that this, the the revenue or the expenditure in our department may go down depending on that funding. Um, and so like I said, I have a meeting with them next week to to kind of facilitate those conversations to see how we move forward with that. The reason we didn't have this program years ago was, it was my understanding prior to me coming on board that previous staff had lost that funding. Um, and so that was one of the programs that was, you know, affected through COVID nineteen as well. And so then it took us a while to get there and then with the building um, being under repair, we were unable to facilitate the congregate meal program. And so we're finally at a point where we're ready to pick this program back up now that our kitchen is um gonna be up and running for this next fiscal year.
You know, I have a question for you, um. Um, what's a percentage that um Community Services gets from Measure K? Cause I know we passed that a long time ago, the citizens did, and it was supposed to be a certain percentage of Measure K went to Community Services. Are you still getting the same and do we need to up that percentage? I mean, it seemed like to me like you could use some help, uh, that's what Measure K was made for, for Community Services. Uh, I mean, I, I would like to get a look at and see what, what, you know, what's coming in. How much is um Measure K bringing in?
So, if if I can, council member, um, in the adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, no, no worries, um, to to the council member's question, um, in the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget, in the budget transfers, there's about three hundred thousand. That was transferred to um, uh, Fund Six O Five, which is art center, uh, Six O One, which is recreation and um, Four Fifty Six, that was part. Specific to your question for recreation, it was about ninety thousand that was transferred out of Measure K. Um, as part of the TOT tax um, to specifically to Community Services. But when you combine the three, Community Services received about two hundred and ninety-eight thousand from Measure K. Measure K is an unrestricted uh tax measure. Measure K is an unrestricted tax measure, I think it was originally um proposed as Measure K for the kids uh to go to recreational services. However, I think the original vote for it, I think in two thousand nine um, was a specialized tax, which uh was a two-thirds vote under the state of California, which did not pass. It was brought back in two thousand thirteen as a uh unrestricted fund tax that uh passed, I think, by a few hundred votes, uh fifty percent majority. Um, but that is an unrestricted uh fund that has historically fifty percent has gone to Community Services, cause excuse me, Community Services programs.
Question for you, and 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 so. I guess the real question is, if we can go back May sixth and, you know, we're saying that, you know, a a percentage of Measure K goes to X, Y, and Z, which would be the art center and to senior center. Can we go back and can we get a breakdown of how much actually went to the senior center, how much actually went to the art center? And and maybe even take it a step further. Where, what, what are they using it for? Because at the end of the day, and my, my biggest, my biggest concern is that, I mean, one of the biggest, and and I appreciate Mr. Uh, OC, to get up that. We're talking about the kids, we're, we're, you know. I, I appreciate that we're using the majority of the money going to the art, to the senior center for our seniors, but I also want to make sure that it's going to these kids. You know, at the end of the day, it's the kids, so and keeping the kids off the streets is one of the main focuses for us. So if if the majority or some of it's going to the art center, I wanna know where, 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 what, what is, what it's getting invested in and what's a dividend for our community? What are we getting in rate, what's the rate of return for us? So we can do that and break it down, cause I, right now, we're having a lot of discussions and I, and I, I apologize, but as an accountant, you know. Um, we're having a lot of discussions, but I don't see anything that is on numbers and I need to break it down in numbers. So I I'd really like to just maybe cut more of the talk and maybe May sixth come back with a budgetary items with even, even, even a balance sheet to every department. To go to every, because that's where we're gonna find out where our dividends pain.
Uh, and and to the council member's point, I think again, the high-level discussion is the, the discussion about needs of the departments, right? We fully appreciate the need for clarity and transparency in terms of a balance sheet and where revenues and the expenditures are coming. Um, again, historically, the initial budget presentation is is a high-level discussion on needs of the departments. You've heard needs a- as an example, the, the need for a fire truck, right? And how do we plan accordingly so that the council is prepared for a big number, right? Um, to that point, uh, I just wanna make it clear, um, we fully understand the need to provide additional information at the draft budget.
Yeah, cause we're getting sort of a quarter of the story right now, where this is, you know, we're just not seeing the full picture. We need to know the the revenues, we need a breakdown of the expenses. I'll, I'll, I'll end, you know, today I'll have a little more detail there.
I just wanna make a comment, um, I was on the Community Service Commission for twelve years and most of the years I was Service Commissioner. And I always told the commission and the director that used to be there and the one that's there now, a Community Service Commission is not there to make money. We can't forget what our, what our mission is, our mission is to provide, provide recreation. I don't remember the mission statement for Community Service to me to make money or to, you know, they make our city look good, the art center does. How many cities can say, we got an art center and provide the quality of plays that they do? And mind you, these people that provide these plays, they're all volunteers, they're not getting paid then, I mean, you look at, they dedicate hours and hours and hours. My son lives in Madera, he needs to direct plays and stuff, he tries for Madera every day to do a play, to direct, to help the kids keep them off the streets. So uh, my thing is, you know, hey, let's help the kids, that's what, that's what the Community Services was founded for, it wasn't to make money. How do you make money out of shape or how do you make money out of providing, seeing these kids running around? How do you quantify that, you like that, a new word, quantify, how do you quantify that and put it down in paper? A bunch of kids having fun running around, it's better of them being out there and the streets causing trouble, you know, thank you.
Agree both, we have to do both, don't we, we have to have, we gotta operate like a business in some ways to cut our, you know, make sure we keep our expenses low. Keep as much money coming in as possible, but at the end of the day, we're not a business, we're a city and we're transparent and our bosses are twenty-five thousand people. And they're the ones that are keeping this ship afloat and we gotta make sure that we account for every dollar and that's what we're, that's why we're all here today, taking four hours from our jobs and off of work. So that um, so we can help our city to be better and, you know, Boys and Girls Club's another one, Community Services, keeping the pool open, you know, for summer swim. I know you guys are applying for that tonight at the healthcare district, I don't know if a micro grant of five thousand is gonna defray the whole thing, but that's worthy, that, that keeps kids from drowning. You know, you can't put a dollar item on that, it's priceless and we can help our kids as a citizen, as as a city to do that, so they don't jump in the ditch and learn how to swim there. Um, it's so much better to be able to use that high school pool and let's build a pool as a city, let's have a community center and a recreation center and have, have our own, our own center. Where where the kids learn how to swim, that's where we're going, that's where we need to go, that's why we're putting all this, all this together. We just need a better picture, just a more, more detailed picture as the, as the council member mentioned at the, at the May sixth meeting.
Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to give a quick update on the Salma High School pool, I don't want you guys to be blindsided by this, uh, by no means. And so it is my understanding that the Salma High School pool will be open this summer and so I reached out to America Kids Swim, the company that we normally contract out for lifeguarding services. Um, the company that they normally use has backed out, so at this point I have no. No great leads on a lifeguarding services and um, like a, a company that we can contract out to manage and oversee the pool for the summer. And so that's something that I'm currently working on, um, I am going to the healthcare district tonight, um, just to address those issues, cause I did apply for the micro grant. But um, through our Sparks Department, we're also trying to offer a different alternative if the pool is not a viable option for us. Um, we do not have a job description for a lifeguard, um. There's just a lot of different roadblocks that we have to get to um, within a five-week notice. And so um, our conversation for the summer might be a little bit different, um, staff is currently working on an alternative. If need be, um, we do wanna run our Sparks Club, which um, we do wanna host over at the Salazar Center um, three times a week this summer. And so that might be an alternative that we're looking at instead of the pool. Um, we are still working with America Kids Swim to provide swim lessons, it's just the community swim program, maybe the one thing that is affected this summer. Only because um, I don't have a company to contract with for um, the lifeguarding services or the management of the pool or the safety equipment that comes with it. So um, I should have some more information within the next few days as I'm, I'm still reaching out to other companies to see if, if I can find a lead on that.
Got it, and you're stepping into this, kind of the shoes, you're doing kind of director job things too. So totally understand that you were kind of thrown into this, this wasn't your job, you're coming to it late. But word to the wise in the future, get started on this in February, you know, talk to Lori Clad over at Swim America early. So that, I remember Kurt, Mike Kirchner, he, he would meet with her in, around Thanksgiving, you know, before, just to set it up every, every year. So it just takes a lot of coordination and a lot of forward-looking, again, you're new to this, not your fault, but you see how, see how things can go wrong. And this is a great program and Salma's been doing it since two thousand thirteen.
And we've been working since March and unfortunately I did get the news at the end of March about the lifeguard shortage and I've been, um, not the lifeguard shortage, but the. Unfortunately, the company that has backed out that normally did it. And so I have some resources that I'm reaching out to, some people that I've been calling, um, but at this time I'm, I, there's a possibility, we may not have the community swim program.
And is there a possibility of looking at splash parks for all the parks in the, in the future, kids love it, at Salazar Park? Um, how, I would love to know about putting splash parks in it at all our parks in the future, including Bralling or.
I mean, we can prioritize and see what the general cost is to add it, and which we could maybe do a feasibility analysis to determine where it could happen and and.
Especially for not doing, having the pool, pool swim.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at um, at our parks and maybe uh do like a low-level feasibility study to determine where it's feasible, right?
You know, um, let, uh, before, um, well, last time I spoke to Amy, which was a while back, uh, she had stated that it was in the works to try to get uh splash parks to all the parks and I don't know. Where that went, also another request, um. Would it be possible to have Liz come and be here for the council meetings and give the, the reports because? Would it be possible to have Liz come and be here for the council meetings and give the the reports because she's. She's very well versed versed, I'm sorry, versed in what's happening with parks and everything else. So I think would be a. Good for the council to hear from her since she's got all the knowledge and everything else. That request also, it's up to you, city manager.
I I have another question for this young lady. Well, on the on the Pioneer Village, you know, we can't leave that out. Are we still, are we still killing uh, are we still collecting revenue from uh Cattlemen's?
Yes.
Yes.
Um I I believe we were looking at reviewing that agreement as well. Um I think I think there's some discussion about the amount of parking. Yeah, with with the and with the adoption of the master plan out at Pioneer Village, I think there needs to be some discussion about. If we're gonna revamp parking, what what is the city gonna receive from Cattlemen's as part of that discussion, but.
That that will that be added in the budget on a separate lot? Well, part of that uh recreation department?
I mean, the agreement for Cattlemen's, I believe, shows up in non-departmental revenue, whatever revenue we receive.
Okay.
It'd be great to know where measure K actually goes. Who gets it?
To that point, Mayor, again, um in the twenty four twenty five budget, we will include a similar breakdown of the percentages of where. Um it was allocated.
Great.
Um we we showed fifty percent as in the breakdowns that I provided in the transfer sheet. Fifty percent went to community services and the various. Uh uses uh senior center, parks and um art center. Um and so it was about three hundred thousand, but we'll provide a similar breakdown as part of the budget.
As detailed as possible, as the council member said. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to give a little update, um uh Mayor, city council members, thank you. Uh just a little update for us. We did increase our um our expenditures. Yes, I'll speak louder. I apologize. Um we did uh increase our expenditures a little bit in our um for our youth program. Um basically bringing it back to what it was before, following the natural flow of the increase. And then um we are looking to do a um arts exposure uh this next year where we take kids. Um kind of the similar to what we do with the teens, where we take kids to see art, either a performance. Um so that's a little of their increase there. Um a performance or an art exhibit. Um and then another portion of that would be our six oh five um the art center. And we are looking to do some improvements, uh especially in our basement, to give a healthy, safe um. Clean environment down there for changing and makeup. We usually have about sixty five kids in our production and just having kind of again. A more designated area for kids to be down there and uh change in appropriate places. Um and then having appropriate tables and makeup tables. Um and then there's just a couple of other cases. So. That would be um the majority of our increase at this time.
Thank you. And then are we looking? Um at Rockwell Pond again for parks? We're looking for a regional park, starting that process again.
I I I don't think that conversation ever stopped. I think I think um with the um. Presentation of the Parks Master Plan, I think from a policy standpoint, it just further solidifies the city's position in pursuing Rockwell Pond as a regional park. And what that would look like, but staff has not, you know, uh foregone pursuing that as part of, as part of uh the regional park system.
I think we need to turn up the heat a little bit on that one, too. Thank you.
But if we're gonna do that, I mean, I would think we should purchase the land. I think we should go into discussion with the the county. So we can purchase it and start doing analysis on where it's gonna go.
I agree.
And phase it into at least three to four year, four, three to four year, not three to four year plan, but a three to four year phase. To do a regional park. I mean, I'm just, I'm just speaking of my part.
And the Cemetery District is getting involved. They're getting acreage. We don't want to lose out. We want to be part of that. You know, how awesome would that be to have a regional park there in a cemetery? And a lot of development around there. I mean, that that area is is starting to boom. Be a great, be a great place. Makes a lot of sense. And we're gonna have some, hopefully some working capital when we um sell that land at um. At McCall and and Nelson. So I know that we're we're bringing that back too. So we need some uh some money in the in the pot for that. We'll have to see um in terms of dedicating that. That might be some additional revenue that the city will have. Ready to move on? Go.
Uh so we'll move over to community development for planning. Um we had discussions about a GIS analyst position. We don't currently have a job description. Um for that, we've we've talked about it. We're gonna take a look at our current billing with our consultants to see if we can justify that cost. Um we do have a lot of internal departments that use GIS. Uh fire prevention, uh uses it for fire hydrants. Uh we use it for streetlight billing for the L L M Ds. We use it for. Uh storm drain infrastructure. We use it for identifying development, uh costs and conditioning of projects. Um there's a multitude of public works functionality in terms of gathering assets in the field. Such as we talked about with street signs and identifying street signs when they're updated. So GIS analyst. Um would be able to provide a lot of information in a short amount of time. Um we talk about working smarter, not harder around here, similar to the flock cameras and being. Um you know, innovative with our technology and getting the most bang for our buck. A GIS analyst could be, could be a position that would um. Uh provide efficiencies in multiple departments. Ho- however, again, we will look, review that along with our current billing. With our consultants to see if we can justify that cost. Um the general plan update, um we currently have it unspent. That wouldn't come out of the general fund. It comes out of the general plan update fund. Which is collected as part of every building permit that's pulled within the city. Um so we're still planning on doing that. Um we've been uh a little. Uh we've been working on most of the master plans and having those in place at the time we do the general plan just helps that go a lot smoother. So. Um contract planning services um would be a reduction. Um I believe we've had in the past upwards of a hundred fifty, two hundred fifty thousand for professional services for contract planning. Uh planning is is currently staffed. And so this would just be for supportive services if needed. It's not necessarily uh something that we would spend, but in the event there's something that's needed. Um an environmental document, um a rendering for a project associated with a uh capital improvement. Uh capital project, something along those lines that's needed. It's it's at least there. Um however, it's not anticipated to spend that if we don't need to. Um community development building. Um we've integrated, um I think, some um. You know, interactive plan check through uh Blue Beam across multiple departments. That include uh again, fire, building, planning, engineering, public works. We even incorporated. Um uh outside vendors like uh our plan checker to make sure it's all integrated and um streamlined. Uh that was one of the things when I got here that I said I would do was streamline the review process and that's what this helps to do. Um in addition, um council re- uh revised the um building plan check contract. With uh Rob Karsey to um have a maximum per per project. At at the time, the contract was negotiated, uh I think three or four years ago. He was eligible to receive upwards of fifty five percent of whatever the plan check fee was. And if you had a plan check fee according to our fee schedule, that was eighty thousand dollars. He was entitled to about forty five thousand dollars. And so what staff did was went back and revised that agreement. We capped his plan checks at a specific cost. And so we've had some savings as part of that contract. Um we have full-time staff. I think that accounts for some of the increase uh in the overall budget. Um but we also um have a contract with uh Will Dan. In the event our building inspector is out or we have some sort of special inspection that's needed or just additional support. So. Support services is both plan check and and a smaller percentage towards uh building inspection. Um for economic development, um you have the revision to the Chamber of Commerce contract. Um which included half of the annual third of July fireworks program. Um that was moved um out of economic development to a non-departmental expense. Um at the um uh Business Improvement District, you still have the hundred thousand storefront improvement grant, which is a reimbursable. Grant program which we have to show as uh an expense. However, again, it's a first come, first serve. Uh reimbursement type program that would only be um transferred out of the general fund once we received applications. And we've broadened the application pool for that as part of that project. Um in addition, um I believe at the downtown bid, there was a pending budget request of upwards of a hundred thousand dollars. So we just made sure to include that um as part of um the preliminary budget discussion. Um the reduction, I don't believe includes the hundred thousand as part of that. But we just wanted to make sure it was on everybody's radar, that that was um likely to be an ask from the downtown bid. Um for engineering, you have professional services um at four hundred fifty thousand. Again. Uh we were gonna review part of that to see if staffing can replace some of the services we were paying out of uh that contract. Um a lot of those fees as staff has brought up, um is paid through reimbursements, either through the collection of review fees. And really, the the associated cost for the city engineer was in between like thirteen and eighteen percent, right? That wasn't some fee or some sort of reimbursement from some outside revenue source. Um as part of the standards and specs update, we're currently going through what I term as like phase one of the standard and specs, which is about twenty five thousand dollars. So we're proposing a second phase of that of twenty five thousand dollars for next year.
On that um engineer position, we we have the best. We have Yamabe and Horn and they charge like the best because they're the best. Do we need that in our town of Selma? I think we've had this talk at a previous council meeting. And I think Director Horn, he's he said the same thing. Get it, the in the interests of Selma over the long term. It's better to have a full-time city engineer who comes here and spends forty hours doing what it takes. Five employees under Mister Horn to do at a at a pretty, pretty good, pretty good amount. Um in terms of the city, and we'll be talking about positions more in the future at our next meeting. But is that something that the city is currently recruiting for a full-time engineer? Have you perceived any interest? Or is that something that we need to turn the heat up a little bit on?
I I I think it's it's a, it's a larger discussion than that, Mayor. I think. Having a city engineer or some sort of engineering position, whether it's an a, an associate engineer, maybe that can do. Um maybe some of the work that um. Uh David Staff does on the regular, because that's the bulk of what we pay for, right? Because when when we sign up Yamabe and Horn, we pay for his fifty three employees, right, to to weigh in on our projects. And so we we've provided the list of all the people that have touched projects in the city of Selma, right? And so as part of staff's review of the budget, we are looking at whether, uh similar to the GIS position, if there's positions that we can. Review, um such as I think a public works inspector is one of the, is one of the positions which we have recruited for. And I believe we briefly filled filled that position, but that is a cost that we pay. Um that could be a a reduction in overall cost. And so it's apart from just city engineer, I think engineering as a whole. There's multiple positions that we could look at. My recommendation would maybe, I can, we can talk about. Timing and things like that in terms of remote time or whatever to bring costs down. Um it whether or not it David's needed at the city full-time, three days a week, what have you. While we're investigating the feasibility, because as the mayor's pointed out, getting a district engineer, S K F has proven difficult as well, right? And so it it's it's a, it's a position that is highly sought after um throughout. California and and really the country, right? And so um we appreciate that we do have one of the best engineers working here. And it's helped us a lot, I think, move a lot of the projects that we have forward. Um but I think we need to take a hard look at um the really the feasibility of a city engineer. And maybe maybe along the lines of an engineering technician or an associate engineer.
Well, you're gonna talk to each one of us over next week and that'll be one of the topics you and I will definitely delve into more. Cause I appreciate the nuanced look at it rather than just one position, maybe many positions or a more of a. Training position to move into that position eventually. Thank you.
So the next section we have is basically a snippet of your um capital improvement program. To show um the variety of funds that are non. General fund projects and the and the various sources that they come out of. And so. Um you have about six point eight million dollars in various streets, facilities. Um trail, um storm drain type projects on this list. Um that we anticipate um uh working on over the next fiscal year.
These a hundred percent funded?
Uh as as they are shown, I believe they are a hundred percent funded.
Are these all projects that are going to be started or completed within the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I asked for. Thank you.
I I mean, I'll let the engineer uh clarify.
So will these will be done a year from now?
Uh if you look at the list, the there's projects more at the top that have the higher numbers. Those are the the construction numbers. So those projects have actually been designed this fiscal year. And will go into construction next fiscal year. And there's projects at the bottom that have the smaller numbers. Those are the design numbers for those projects, because these capital improvement projects typically take two fiscal years to design. And then go out to bid and construct. So you have a combination of both. So that. If these are in the budget, they will all get either finished or started in the next fiscal year.
To that point, design, we consider a project. And so design in the fiscal year should be completed. The construction portion of the project would be in a subsequent fiscal year.
So at the very least, the design's gonna be a hundred percent on these.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent design.
And that's how most of our projects usually are funded, is you'll see a small number and a and then a subsequent number. It's it's sometimes hard depending on how many agencies we have to coordinate with or what have you. Um to do both design and construction in the same year, because you're having to coordinate with P G and you're having to coordinate with C I D. You're having to coordinate with Caltrans on some of these projects, right? And so um the design portion. I mean, on our city projects, like a a block of street, relatively simple, right? Um when you start getting into an intersection project, we've had this discussion, those can be multi-year. They can be multi-fiscal year type projects.
Then the gentleman with his um sidewalk or in Van Horn is, where would he fall under? San Mitchell Avenue, Rask Avenue?
The funding for that project is C D B G.
Okay.
So you uh there's a twenty four C D B G project there. That's funding that comes from the county.
The side, that's the sidewalk connectivity project.
Correct. So the Van Horn uh issue might be a little bit different, but that's the money we've been using for sidewalk.
If I'm talking to somebody on Mitchell Avenue, I can tell him, you know, there's gonna be a a seal that will be applied this year.
And um I will also be sending out a link to the dashboard, the GIS dashboard. That is able to be um uh utilized.
I'd like to have that when I'm walking around, talking to people.
You can, and and the way it will work is it'll have a lot of this information in terms of funding. What phase it's in? Is it in the design phase? Is it in the bidding phase? Is it in the construction phase? Is it in the closeout phase? What year it's budgeted for? We have a ten-year C I P, so we want to make sure people understand. When and where those projects are gonna occur. I think one of the questions from Council Member Avalos at prior meetings was where are those projects occurring? And this type of spatial um information along with the tabular information in terms of cost and timing. And where it's at in the description of what's actually happening, I think will be extremely helpful for not only uh transparency. But in terms of being able to communicate what we're doing with tax dollars.
Remember the um previous city clerk, she had on there, on the districts where you could click on the districts. You can still do it right now.
Yeah.
And it's helpful, because people are always asking what district are you in? What what district am I in? And you just put their address in. People are always asking, what are you doing this year? What streets are you doing? If we could just click on that and make it easy on the phone, that would be very helpful.
And it would be available on your phone. It would be available on your computer, iPad, what have you. Um we'll we'll work on rolling that out. We're in the final stages of buttoning it up right now to the, to it has multiple. Uh it has like a summary of what C I P is for the layperson and describes what it means. It has active project, past projects, active projects and future projects, I believe is what it has. So. You are able to see a full snapshot of where we were, where we are and where we're going.
Deal. Do we have any internship program? Deal. Do we have any internship programs with Fresno State in the city or in the offing? Thinking about it for the engineering program, civil engineering?
Not that I know of. At the city, our office does.
You do?
Yes.
Do you bring them here?
Uh I haven't yet. It depends on the tasks and their their availability. We uh there are inspectors that go out and they're construction management students.
You know of any cities that do that right now, have um yeah intern programs like that?
Um I I have some ins at Fresno State. I could talk to them, who they're working with. I actually used to teach at Fresno State in the G I S program. And so I'll reach out to the geography department, geography and urban planning department to see if they have any. And then I will assume David has some contacts over at the engineering.
Let me look at the police. They fund kid, people that go to the academy.
Right.
Why couldn't we help with people who go to Fresno State in the engineering programs?
I have a question. I don't know if that uh Thompson Park is a capital project, but where are we at on that? I mean, it's been a while already.
So um we're working through some, I mean, I'll let I'll let David kind of chime in.
The design's about ninety-five percent, so they're almost finished. We've been making comments and working with the engineer that uh is in charge of designing the park. The last issue that we've had to deal with is the C I D canal that's down there. Jerome came up with a solution on trying to make that engineering go a little bit quicker. Uh so they are finishing their plans based on the comments that the city departments have given them. And that should be within, my guess is, a number of weeks before we get those plans back. And then there is the developer that's developing the land around the park and donating the land. And they're finalizing work with planning right now and and working through changes on their development, so.
Yeah, because we have those four million uh dollars that they're burning a hole in my pocket.
Grants manager has been talking to those people, and I've been providing updates.
Residents in my area, they've been bugging me because we need we need that open space. I mean, we're running out of open space quick. Thank you.
In terms of capital improvements, who owns the land next to um Ringo Park, the big soccer field there?
Eve, that is um that project that came to the city council last May, um the apartment project that was adjacent to that. And then um you have public works parks. Um you have some building repairs that are various parks, professional services, as well as some equipment. I think you have a lawnmower in there to help with efficiency of staff and and making sure our parks uh are uh maintained appropriately. Um I know um uh Public Works spends a lot of time at our parks now. And what we're trying to do is get them on a program uh with appropriate equipment so that they can rotate accordingly on a on a proper schedule to keep the parks uh uh up up to um a a a standard that's expected of the residents. Thank you.
You did a great job at two hundred and eighty-four thousand. Where's it going? Where where's all that? I mean, that's a pretty big increase.
Again, I mean, you have some building repairs that are requested, um some additional uh professional services. I think it was for an arborist for some of the trees at the parks, um as well as the purchase of one-time purchase of equipment. I think um in terms of staffing levels out there too, you have some hires. Um but uh again, we'll dive into, I think, some of those details as well.
Would that include the cost for the poles in Schaefer that are gonna have to be paid for in the future? That's not even.
That's not even included, no.
Got it. And then um downtown, trees and lights, the one fifty-three, where's that for the lights?
That would be something that we need to include. We're aware of that one in terms of um either it being a non-departmental expense because it's a citywide expense and not necessarily coming out of a specific department and identifying funds to to do that. I know we've reached out, um we've at least applied, I think, for a T-Mobile grant. I think it was fifty thousand dollars. Um as well as um I think that one can actually be applied for multiple times. So um I think we're looking at applying for that again, and I believe there was one other grant we were looking at, uh possibly.
And there's a really big grant that the city got for Second Street, like a three, three and a half, four million dollar grant.
That's for the, it's the uh Californ- Clean California Grant.
Restricted to trees only?
It's restricted to the off-ramps and then basically Second Street from ninety-nine to basically the railroad is really what it is, and it incorporates.
So at Wilkins?
It will not go over the rail. I mean, for one thing, we don't wanna deal with the railroad and unknown costs for for dealing with them. And so really, it's a gateway type of grant to facilitate people off the highway coming to downtown.
So I was looking at that, and I heard the objections at the last meeting that public safety vehicles couldn't get through an arch. If we put an arch in there, because it's gonna be, there arches would be, you know, it would be, it would impede the progress of public safety vehicles. Those lines are already up there, and I don't think they're creating a problem. What if the arch would be as high as those lines that are at um Second and Floral right now? I mean, um.
If I could just add real quick, it may not be just the height, but we were talking with the fire department on how how sharp the big trucks can turn.
Correct.
So we were having to.
You couldn't put them in the corner, but could you put it inland a little bit? Could you put it?
That's that's what we're looking at, like where the where the little wire is now between those.
Would that grant pay for an arch like that, something?
What what we've looked at, what we've looked at is a couple of variety of options to to the discussion regarding uh the grant. What we have to do is make sure that our existing services with various departments aren't impacted, right? And I believe the fire department operations on West Front would be impacted, I think, by the original location of our sign of of where we had proposed it. So we're working internally with departments on redesigning. What we proposed was a was a um pair of monument signs that are pillars that say welcome to downtown Selma, going in and then coming out that say, thank you for visiting downtown. And and what it would do is it would also allow us to hang banners between and give us some functionality between the two, right? So what we're trying to do is maximize to the to the point about an arch. Um I think an arch also is a little bit more expensive and outside of our budget in terms of three million. When we got the grant is different than three million now. So we're trying to maximize what we can do to enhance the gateway to downtown as part of the, you know, strategic initiatives of the city council. Um as well as the momentum we have for the downtown strategic plan and some of the other items we have going on. So the California Green uh Gateway Grant um starts at the off-ramps. Has various improvements to beautify the off-ramps, some signage, as well as trees that will match the downtown strategic plan along Second Street and provide basically a a uh, I'm not gonna say a runway, but kind of like a runway or a gateway to get people to direct them to downtown.
Since you said that, uh let me ask you this, California grant, like these off-ramps. Could develop these um develop, you know, when you come off these off-ramps, you know, can you use those? I know it's still part of the freeway. Can you use some of those grants off the freeway, like develop an ice plant or something more greenery? Instead of looking at weeds, they look at some, oh man, this is nice. You know, like when you go, when you when you go to the coast, you get off these off-ramps and they got an ice plant, there's nice trees and bushes. It's not so drabby looking, you know, I mean, it's more beautiful. Is it possible? Grants like that?
It it's possible. It it it's possible. Oh, you're good. You're good, council member. I I think. There's no pressure. Um staff has reached out to Caltrans to work on a um maintenance agreement of the off-ramps so that we could try and identify and reduce costs along the off-ramps. Anything we do is required to go to Caltrans for approval. Fortunately, I believe Caltrans has gone through doing uh beautification and landscaping plans for the off-ramps already. And so I don't know if you've driven through Fresno, um there's a bunch of hardscape and things that they're doing at the off-ramps.
Did you see the grapes on Selma now, now in ninety-nine?
Yeah, so so Caltrans is going through and they're they're funding that. We're not having to fund that. What we're trying to do is coordinate our plans and actually um dovetail our project into their landscaping. So we're having, we've had coordination meetings. If you've ever seen a um virtual meeting with Caltrans, we have like eight people. They have like eighty people on on their meetings. They have a lot of people. They have their surveyors, they have their engineers, they have their landscapers. They have their permit people, their encroachment people. It it's it's not easy to coordinate with Caltrans. And so the fact that they're doing the landscaping and it's gonna be somewhat hardscape, but it's gonna be updated. Um we're gonna ensure and hold them accountable for making sure that they maintain their landscaping once it's done. But part of the um reason for updating the the landscaping with hardscape is to reduce the water usage and the need for ongoing maintenance of the landscaping, right? And so what you'll see is those off-ramps get updated, and then they'll get updated again when we come back through.
Got it. Well, we don't wanna do, what we do as a council is, and I know we're coming up on two. But we look at the kind of the the broader horizons, and the details are important. The water is always crucial. But bottom line, we just want our downtown to look better. And Second Street, I mean, it it's not always been like that. We got the big signs, the big dinosaur signs out now. We've got uh businesses coming in. Um so the Centotaphic signs that we used to have, they're gone. So we've got um a Starbucks coming in, we got a big grant. Let's use it. You know, a time to get going and uh make our downtown inviting. Can you imagine that? Just that, just anything that we put in that's, you know, stylistic and maybe shows a little picture of the art center. And we have our theme now for our downtown, which brings me to my next point. Where are we on the trees for Second Street?
That will be part part of the budget as well.
That's that's part of the annual budget for the parks, the one point five.
It it will be. It will be included as part of the budget request.
Have we priced out the pistachio trees yet for the for the Second Street? Do we have a, do we even have a concept of how that's gonna look?
Um we're working on getting um some illustrations to go along with the um design guidelines.
That we're we're having a program, right, middle of the month?
We're we're supposed to have a workshop on the downtown design guidelines, and part of that discussion is is we're working on getting renderings from the consultant um that prepared the downtown strategic plan to incorporate what the trees would look like with the facades.
Um, you said Second Street? Did you mean High Street?
I mean Second Street. We got High Street. We got the lights coming in on High Street. And of course, the trees will come in next. It, maybe I'm jumping the gun here.
I was on the same wavelength as David. Um the the California Green Grant will fund the trees on Second Street.
On Second Street?
Yeah.
Great. What's gonna fund the plan on High Street, the trees?
That that is the budget request that we're that we're talking about.
It would help if we had a price on those trees so that we can build that into the budget. Because we got a pri- we know what, we we have an engineer's estimate on what it's it's gonna do to cost to put the lights in.
I provided an engineer's estimate on the landscaping trees to the grants manager as they were working to try and get grants.
You did the same for the trees too?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Just for the High Street portion. So when now we're looking at Second Street, we can add that.
So when we have a business owner on Second that are High Street that would like to add a tree as well. The uh the maiden voyage, I think that would look really good there and and they, you know, pay their dues of the bid. Love to be able to fit that in as well.
I I think depending on our success with the grant program, uh whether it's T-Mobile or other programs. The plan is uh High Street between First and Second, Second Street, and then progressing down High Street with with future trees, because High Street was identified as the the primary landscaped area and then moved to the to.
That's where all the trees were taken out in the first place.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so um we're well aware of the desire of other business owners to do it. Um if they were to do it, um we could develop a standard for them to install it. But we would obviously prefer it be a coordinated efforts to ensure it's done according to the standards that we need to ensure longevity of those trees.
As as you know, you were at the last bid meeting, just like we were, and the consensus there was we don't wanna leave everybody else out. It's not just High Street between First and Second.
And to that point, Mayor, I think the bid as a whole needs to be doing things that affect the entire bid district, right? And so those type of discussions, whether it's street furniture or whatever, we have to spread it around. Whether we pepper around furniture based on financing resources or we do the whole area all at once. It has to benefit the entire bid area all at once, or it has to be identified in a phasing program.
You know, I just wanna ask a question. I mean, how expensive would it be to add another tree? I mean, I already promised the guy he's gonna get a tree.
Well, I think, I don't think it was necessarily, I it it wasn't it wasn't overlooked that we understand that we need to add trees. Everybody's gonna get appropriate spacing of trees along High Street. What is the additional cost is ensuring that the sidewalk is still usable and installing a new tree well out in a parking space. And so you have to, you know, excavate and do and run infrastructure to that tree out in the street. And so each one, I I think it was about.
Could be ten to fifteen for each one.
Yeah.
Once all of the.
I was gonna say eighteen.
To cut, saw it cut, put a tree in.
I'm just guessing.
You're guessing.
I have an estimate that has a certain number of tree wells.
And just so you know, I don't like the idea of taking up spaces for trees. I've been to a lot of different cities, and I haven't seen one city that is taking up spaces to put a tree. So I would like the trees to be put in the tree wells.
So the tree wells would just be away from the building. So Kingsburg, they're downtown, it's like that. It was done before the parking stalls were done. So the reason why we had to take the trees out with the sidewalk is they were too close to the buildings, too close to the sidewalk. So that there's, there's, there's pros and cons to both of it, but.
And and to that point, I'm sorry, council member, to that point, I think part of the downtown strategic plan also was to ensure that the sidewalks remained usable, outdoor space for some of the restaurants as well. If you include a tree in those areas, it reduces the walkable area for A D A as well. Or it reduces the area that they can have outdoor tables along the sidewalk. And so ensuring that we maintain some of the um strategic um policies of the of the of the strategic plan in downtown, I think is really important. It it, the amount of spaces that would be taken up by trees, I think, is a nominal number compared to the benefit of having wide sidewalks that remain usable to the businesses. They would, and in addition, we won't have the ongoing maintenance of trees within the sidewalk that we'll have to maintain um or retrofit in the future. I mean, the whole point of them being removed was because they were raising sidewalk. And if you put them out in the parking stalls, you don't have the issue of them affecting the sidewalk infrastructure. And then you don't have an ongoing cost to maintain them.
Is putting a tree in a parking stall eliminating that parking stall or just moving? Or just restricting the space in that parking stall a little bit?
Eliminating the parking stall. The tree well takes up a parking stall.
A tree tree well, it like goes closer to the sidewalk. So what about all that other distance? Where what happens to that? Just goes away? What goes in front of that tree?
Uh it's it's the tree well. So it's the land, that's the dirt area.
So the tree well is how, what, four foot square or how?
No, it's the full size of a parking stall.
Full size of a parking stall, that is.
Strategic plan had that laid out. Yeah.
And how many, how many um stalls are we looking at?
Concept that I showed at council had like six or seven spaces within, from High Street from First to Second.
I have a question, and it probably doesn't retain to what we're talking about right now. But you know, it it really, it really makes a lot of sense in regards to the integrity of the bid, in regards to where we're gonna be stationing and where we're gonna be. I know people are talking about, hey, let's put a tree here and there, but one of the things that's been, you know, coming to my mind is, you know, yes, you know, we have High Street from Second to First, but at the same time, what about all the other bid areas? Because everybody else is paying a dividend. So what are we doing to make sure that, you know, e- even though we're just focusing on two certain areas, what are we doing to make sure that we represent all the logistics of the bid? Area that's being being charged. Um I I say that because I'm on West Front. Uh my biz, my building, my other building. Uh what are we doing to represent that area as a city?
And but I, and again, to that point, council member, I think the the monies that are spent out of the Business Improvement District for promotion um as well as any sort of improvements for street furniture or or whatever projects the bid specifically does need to be identified and planned accordingly throughout the bid. And so if we're proposing to buy.
Because if we're, because we as, we as elected officials that represent districts, that represent the city monies, are representing the entire city. We are representing also the consumers of the bid that the city, the bid, business improvement districts are paying and it it a amount every year. So what are we gonna get? At the, how are we gonna represent an equal and not non-prejudice? Um to make sure to represent everybody in a whole, when we're actually promising people trees in regards where we actually shouldn't be doing that, but how are we gonna represent to our community and to our business owners that we're gonna be equally equally non-prejudiced as a city?
I mean, specific to the bid, which I think is the discussion, you you could correct me if I'm wrong. Specific to the bid area, their budget has to be spent throughout the bid area. And it has to show benefit to all of the businesses that pay into the assessment. And so as part of their adopted budget. They need to develop a plan for implementation, whether it's street signs, whether it's street furniture, whether it's pressure washing, cleaning up downtown. When you talk about the downtown strategic plan initiatives, you're talking about. A city initiative that's separate from the bid and separate from those assessments that are collected specifically for the purposes of the bid. And so when we talk about trees on High Street, we're talking city capital improvement project, right? The bid as it sits, again, their assessments are collected for the benefit of the bid. So things that they do like social media. They they promote businesses throughout the bid on social media. Any of the street furniture or any of the street signs, whatever program we develop in that area, it has to be spread around and show benefit throughout the entire bid area. And so we're talking kind of about downtown, but we're talking about two different programs to a certain extent. About how we how we expend money in downtown.
We're still using public funds.
Correct. So just just to put a cap on that, you know, we had an event on Friday, people came out. And last summer, we had an, we had, and that was High Street in front of the art center. And last year, we had a couple of events. That were in the parking lot at um, you know, First and Second. Nobody came out. It wasn't as well attended. For so whatever reason, people like being in front of that art center, it just pops. And Friday night, we had people coming out with, they were going to Antonio's, they were going to Curry Cantina, they were going to Riley's. They had good tunes on uh High Street. It's a good vibe. It's bringing our town back. And I think um. That does, as the council member notes, that needs to be spread. I mean, everybody needs to benefit from that. I don't know if the events themselves are gonna be. On Front Street, but Front Street can and should benefit from the increased activity there. And. That's why we're getting merchants who are saying, what about us for the trees? So it would, I think it'd be great if the city could maybe have a Plan B. I think there's gotta be continuity in terms of the trees. But maybe we can work with folks to help them, you know, be part of the of this downtown plan. Where we're putting in the trees and lights. It's probably not gonna be on as big a scale as between First and Second at first, but we wanna, we wanna make sure that everybody, you know. In terms of equity, everybody does get their shot at the at the at the trees and lights as well, cause that's ultimately where we're going.
Could a business buy the tree or plant it?
Sure.
And be non, and could could the business? Would it have to go through? Would it have to go to uh prevailing wage? If we, if we purchased, if the owner purchased a tree and brought its own company and did its own work, could we do that? Like like the county.
I I I believe that would be a public works project if it was done out in the right of way and it would still be subject to prevailing wage.
Unless they get a permit for a structure outside, what about a um, it'd be like a sign, wouldn't it? If you buy a tree, you put in that well. And the city says, well, it's impeding, it's in the right of way. How do you get a permit for something that's in the right of way if it's not dangerous?
You would, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to. You would apply for an encroachment permit and to do the work, but I believe because it's considered in the right of way and it would be turned over to the city for maintenance, I'm assuming. Um, it would be considered a public works project and be subli- subject to prevailing wage.
Like we bought that statue, the Iron Lady, and it was next to our building, sitting in the right of way. And we put it in, we don't, and it became part of the city because it's part of that that parking lot. It it wasn't cheap, but it's doable. You know, I think if someone wants a tree badly enough and lights badly enough, maybe we could come try to find a solution for that.
And and the city attorney can can probably speak more to this than I can. I think there's certain dollar limits before it has to go out to public bid and things like that. As it relates to prevailing. Right. And so there there's different ways.
Much higher, but for the prevailing wage, a thousand bucks.
I'm I'm gonna entertain this because we on my building I just purchased from McDur on High Street. The county came, Caltrans came and put that, took my parking and put that that shrub and that stop sign, right? There's no, there's nothing, no plants there, just weeds, right? But is, from what I understand, the city's gonna maintain that curbage, right? Well, what if we wanted to buy, what if we wanna landscape that area? It has to go through prevailing wage?
I don't know if landscaping would be considered public works, like.
Is it within the city right of way?
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. Everybody came and said that I built it.
No, we've we've gone and looked at it and it was part of the Golden State uh Boulevard Corridor Project where this, the county redesigned. Uh, prior staff, I think, reviewed and approved the plans and the configuration uh took out some parking. It in, they installed mulch out there and there's no landscaping. It's a long, it's a long desert out there in terms of item. But in terms to the council member's question regarding landscaping, um, if there was the installation of landscaping, I think staff would entertain. What those plans are. I think to to the city attorney's point, as long as it's under a thousand dollars, it doesn't need to be prevailing wage.
So someone buys.
Considered a work of improvement at all. I'd have to look at that, but.
Do it.
I'm sure there's ways you can get around that.
We we'd have to do some research on that, but we can, we can find out.
Especially because you're beautifying the city.
It's it's not interfering with lights or poles or.
I don't think, I don't think you're gonna get an objection from staff if somebody wanted a landscape. It's just making sure that we follow the proper protocol to make sure.
And from my end, you know, being that, and I know we're crossing two paths, but having the representation of the business owners versus the bid. And versus the city, um, I mean, it 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 shows that the community wants to get involved and. And nobody's gonna say, oh, they're just picking, they're giving him preference. But on the other side, what if we just donate those trees? That would solve a lot of problems. It wouldn't be the heck and hack and that's what my biggest concern is.
Thank you. Okay, so. We good?
Good.
That's it?
Okay, Public Works Streets, um, you have supplies, I think. There's been um discussion on council um for graffiti abatement, so we are showing. Um, appropriate amount for painting supplies and equipment for graffiti abatement along with. Uh, pothole repairs, which I believe we get a lot of complaints uh about the need to fill potholes. Uh, with some of the new um vehicles in Public Works, there's a need for small tools. They have a small tools budget to outfit those. Um, and have staff go out and fix fix their own items rather than calling a repairman or somebody like that, so. Um, as well as some training for for new staff. And then um an uh equipment purchase, one-time purchase, seventy five thousand dollars for a crack ceiling machine. Uh, the Public Works Director uh wanted to make a point that these type of machines um preserve our roads for longer. And do not, um, they basically increase the lifespan of our roads before the need for major improvement. So making an investment of seventy five thousand dollars would uh drastically reduce our overall capital investment in the future by. Uh, reducing intrusion and um de- degradation of subsectional roads.
How about um, I think we all remember the dog park getting vandalized and Public Works. Having the pressure washer in the shop for a long time. Would it be, are we getting additional pressure washer maybe? Or Plan B, or we're gonna keep renting that, or what's the? Since the, since the city's taking over the graffiti abatement, might be.
I believe that's part of the equipment purchase, but I'll verify.
Thank you.
You can do it. No, the uh, since I got you, what about the the um striping on the, we have a machine for stri- you know, striping for the.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that was a purchase made uh this fiscal year uh for the thermo thermo striping machine.
That that'll be in part of the supplies as far as paint, as far as on the.
I believe that, I that's not a new purchase or a new asset thing.
I mean, as far as.
As part of their supplies overall, that's included in the request.
Was, okay, like striping this, this, like the the streets and everything. Yeah, so the s- they have the equipment to do the thermoplastic striping, but when they're doing maintenance and street striping. That those funds can come out of Measure C, local transportation funds. There's a Measure C Flex Fund that isn't part of the general fund. That is meant for that street maintenance. So the, so the, I think the director, the Public Works Director is trying to get equipment that his staff can use. But we can use funding from uh those other sources for that work and those, the paint and the different things you're asking about. You know, since I got you there, now this uh machine, you know, cracking ceiling machine, is that, is that the, that's the one with um. How big is, that's on wheels, right? That's portable? Yeah, I believe so. It it's like a trailer. It has to heat up the oil and then they have a mechanism that has a long hose and they're filling the. Now, how big is that? Is that, is that the small, is that, it's not the small one, but it's a bigger one? I don't know which one. He's specked out for seventy five thousand, but that's my understanding, yeah. I I know what they are. I just wanted, cause they're they're different types. That's what I'm asking you. What type is this one? I I don't know which one, but I believe Director Hahn has picked one that fits his needs, yeah.
City Manager, can I just include one other thing on the council priorities? I'd like to see commercial businesses or commercial economics. I think that's something big. We get that a lot. As well, where people wanna see more big box stores, you know, if we can emphasize and I don't know, does it fall under that category?
Uh, I I guess I'm I'm not understanding the request. Are you looking for information about what is being generated? From bit, from from our commercial sector as to how that makes up our sales tax revenues? Is is that what you're requesting? Or are you requesting uh development outlook and what our demographics are related to attracting big box retailers? Or doing, or doing an economic analysis and study for uh identifying what our our leakage. And our and our um, our trade area needs are.
How about, let's do a, let's talk about how we can, I mean, we're all going to fair, we're all going to Las Vegas. How about doing an economic workshop about how we can, how we can um. Bring in more businesses to our town and what our investment would look in regards to open land. Bring in and maybe even entertain that Savmart building as to why it isn't.
Yep.
What we can do as a municipal government to entertain and bring in businesses that are in empty buildings. As staff. I mean, what options do we as council have? And thank you for opening that door. Um, we've been requesting the schedule for the people we're meeting with in Las Vegas. And we haven't been uh able to get that information. Um, you know, it's coming around the corner, so we need to uh. You know. I don't wish to made a list of businesses wanting to meet with, but I don't know if they made contact or whatnot.
I'll get with the Economic Development Manager and get an update.
If we could get like a kind of a syll- uh schedule of who we're meeting with and when, that would be helpful. Cause you know, we're all talking to people too, uh, we're gonna talk with their, and then we have that old police station just sitting there with asbestos. I mean, um, the chief talked about mosquito abatement center. We got a nice building right there. Someone said, man, that make a great restaurant. Someone said, man, take it down, make it a ice skating rink during Christmas. You know, all these ideas that are, that are involving that. That are not being used right now. It's just a useless piece of, it's just an attractive nuisance right now. Why don't we develop that building somehow? There's gotta be federal funding for brownfields because it's got that asbestos. There's gotta be transportation money. If we used it as a parking lot for people to park, since we're losing six parking spaces now. Well, let's do something with it. Let's start, let's start generating some ideas about what we can do. Or or sell it. I mean, it's a asbestos, it's a, it issues, so do we need to do that? Or maybe a community center? Anyway, and then um for the next meeting, um, does that conclude the presentation today?
That that concludes staff's presentation, yes.
Thank you, Director Moreno. So just um, thank you for all your hard work on this. Thank you, um, City Manager Keen. Um, thank you for all the other directors who put together the numbers for today, much appreciated. Um, at the next meeting, I think as we discussed. We want much more detail. We want detail. We want an organization chart with the positions and with the salaries. I wanna know in terms of finances, I'm well aware it's not a business. I'm not looking for an income statement. I'm looking for the basics of the revenue. We didn't have revenues today other than the twelve million and that didn't tell us if it was restricted or under. So we need detail. We need to know. You know, what's what's our twenty four, twenty five revenue numbers? We need to compare that with what we're looking at for the coming year. And we need to have, um, as the council member said, we need to know per department what those line items are. I wanna know what those expenses are. That they're asking, that the department heads are asking for. It's hard to just say, you know, like. We want, you know, a twenty four percent increase for five different areas. We don't want that. We want a detail of where that money's gonna be allocated. Um, uh, per department. Also, I'd like an action item on there so that we can change, council can. After we review that and we review the the revenues and the expenses to change um job descriptions. I'd like to change, change some, I'd like council to look at that and put that in front of the council to change some of those. Like we're talking about eliminating administrative assistant for city manager. Let's make the agenda item broad enough that we can eliminate items and we can add descriptions if we, if we would like. To propose that. Can we do that, city attorney? Okay. And then I'd like to know, we had a big round of salary increases last year. I'd like to know. What kind of effect that had on the general fund? I wanna know twenty four, twenty five salaries and if you could give us a historical comparison on that. Twenty three, twenty four, and then if we could also see twenty five, twenty six. How that sorts out there too, cause I know that, I was looking at the admin expenses and they're, they're pretty high. They're a lot higher than they've been in the past. So I wanna know what those salary increases did to the, to the overhead for the city. Cause you know, city seventy five, general fund seventy five percent salaries. That's, that's where most of the money goes in cities. So we we definitely need to know that. Any other council members have any items they wanna see at this time?
Can you include the wage analysis that was brought when you include that wage increases that we had in the past?
The comp class study?
Can you, the wage, the wage analysis that we had done in it last year, can you include that when you include the wages?
Yeah, that's the class and comp study that was provided.
And also, um, we had agreed that we're gonna put um, uh, recognition of second chance animal shelter at the next meeting. So if, what about the resolution? Is somebody gonna write something up? Are we gonna get something for them?
We we have it on there as a special presentation uh as part of our draft agenda.
Always gonna be presenting it that night too.
If you'd like a proclamation, I'd bear that for you. I just need you to give me the information you want me to.
Anybody from public with anything? Anybody online or on the phone and any parting comments?
Mayor, for the record, um, we, staff um initially proposed the draft budget for May sixth. Based on the conversations today, we wanna push that back probably to a special meeting after you guys probably return from ICSC.
Agreed.
With additional information being provided to council.
We we can't look at a draft.
Absolutely, absolutely. And and staff was prepared to make that recommendation today.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.